How many more are there?
Hello.
Hi, I have the question.
Yes. Oh, I smell like gum.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would just like to welcome everyone to the final Commissioners' meeting at 200 Adams Avenue, Lackawanna County Commissioners Conference Room. We thought that this would be a good time to invite some of our former Commissioners back, say a few words, and just to remember some of the great things that happened in this conference room from 1972 to December 19th of 2018. So at this time, I'd like for everyone to rise and we're going to have our Judge Thomas Munley cite the pledge. At this time, I'd like to introduce Thomas Munley, Army Infantry, Bronze Star. Okay.
That never happened when I was here.
Okay, Mark, we're starting over again. This is flag around my office.
Donny saves the day. It's not gonna fit. You gotta put it in first.
Donny, you know what, you can leave it right at the wall.
Bring it around the front.
Want it over the front?
All right. Don't hit it.
That's American flag.
Yeah, that's a... That one's for the office. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, as everyone can tell, we are getting ready to move and everything is going especially Old Glory, which is the blood of our country, our flag. But this time, I'd like to introduce Army Infantry, Bronze Star Medalist, Combat Infantry Bradge, and Vietnam Service Cross, our own Vietnam Veteran and Judge Thomas Munley.
Thank you.
The floor is yours, sirs.
Before I say the Pledge of Allegiance, I just want to say I am so honored to be here with all of the Commissioners, the former Commissioners, you know, Mike Wassers here, Bobby Pennato. This is a big day for us, and thank you so much for inviting me, and I'm prepared to say the Pledge of Allegiance in front of this beautiful crowd.
Thank you for your service. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, will everyone please just stand for a moment of silence. We had a great loss this week. Wyoming County Commissioner Ron Williams died this past week. Ron Williams was a six-term Commissioner, former Police Chief in Wyoming County. Also, he was a resident of Scranton and a great man, and he was one of those people that we could reach out to and talk over, talk about different things that were going on in our county governments. Just please keep him and his family our thoughts and prayers, our moment of silence. Thank you. Also, we have Army Private First Class Joshua McKiska from John Town, PA, who lost his life in Afghanistan. Also, we have Loubretan Police Department, North Carolina. Police Officer Jason Quick was struck and killed by a vehicle while investigating another crash. Cobb County Police Department, Georgia. Police Officer Edgar Flores was shot and killed during a traffic stop. Nmonas County Sheriff's Office, Colorado. Sergeant Matthew Moreno was killed in a crash on Highway 12 in Valdez in response to a domestic dispute. Also, Miami Dade Police Department, Florida. Police Officer Jermaine Brown was killed in an ATV crash while conducting an enforcement detail as a result of a community complaint of illegal activity along a canal path. Charlestown Police Department, Indiana. Sergeant Ben Bantrum was killed in the vehicle crash while involved in a vehicle pursuit. Please keep all of our law enforcement officers that lost their lives and our servicemen and women in your thoughts and prayers, and especially these great heroes that lost their lives recently, keep our families our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. I'd like to bring this Wednesday, December 19, 2018, Board of Commissioners a meeting to order at 10:00 a.m., the Commissioners' Conference Room. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. No, roll call. Yeah, roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
No.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Mary Jo Granahan to get up and say a few words. Where's Mary Jo at? Mary Jo, you stand up by the podium, but first, I'd like to have our Chief Financial Officer lead the way. You know, I want everyone in the viewing audience to realize that Lackawanna County Government is a government where you can ascend to the highest part of your department. I mean, there's no holding you back. I mean, we don't, there's no political firings here, there's no, we're trying to stay away, there's no political hirings, and we try to make sure that the best of our best can get to the top. And in this last year, we actually had our Budget Director resign, I think it was in June, and Mary Jo took over as interim, I think as of August, and we think she's done a tremendous job. Our Chief Financial Officer, I'd like to say a few words, Tom Durkin.
Thank you, Commissioner. As you said, pardon me, earlier this year, our Budget Director abruptly resigned and moved on to take another job, and it left us in the very early summer without a Budget Director, as most of the people who have anything to do with county government are aware that the end of the summer is when we begin to put our budget together and start having our hearings with all the department heads, and so I was a little nervous that it was going to have to be me who did some work this year, and we all certainly know that we don't want that to happen. Fortunately, a young lady in our office, who has been with the county for about 15 years now, stepped forward and expressed interest in the Budget Director position, and when she did so, I was kind of excited to hear that somebody in the office who knows something about how the county works would be interested in doing that. So I brought that to the Commissioners, and the Commissioners thought that it was a good idea to promote somebody from within, and at the time, we wanted to make sure, and I had a conversation with Mary Jo, and she was confident that she could do the job and really interested in doing it, so we actually, at the time, gave Mary Jo a tentative position, a position that we called, I believe, Acting Budget Director, with the intent that we'd see how it goes, and it was a completely new position for Mary Jo, and I was confident she could do the work, and I expressed that to the Commissioners. So we gave her an opportunity, and with the help of a couple of other people in our office, we were able to get a viable budget prepared this year, and Mary Jo worked very, very diligently and did a very good job, and we got a budget prepared in a timely fashion, and the first meeting, I, excuse me, the second meeting in December, the Commissioners adopted that budget, so we have a budget for 2019, and I'm here to just say that I certainly appreciate that Mary Jo stepped up and worked as hard as she did to get this done, because as I said before, it would've had to be me, and that would've been a disaster. So Mary Jo did step up, she got a budget done, and now she's being just recognized a little bit for what she had done, and we're moving her into the full-time, actual Budget Director position, and I'm just here to congratulate Mary Jo and say thank you very much for all the hard work you did and compliment you on the budget that you prepared. It's not an easy task, as you're well aware now. It's a pretty massive budget and takes a lot of work and takes a lot of meetings with a lot of people, but you got it done and you set your mind to it, and congratulations.
And Tom, what was the best part about that budget?
I didn't do it.
I was gonna say, there was no tax increase.
No tax increase, okay. Okay, I'll give you that one. Yeah, no tax increase, certainly. We did another budget without a tax increase, and again, we're moving forward, and our office hasn't missed a beat without the existing Budget Director, and we actually were able to move a couple of other people around in a couple of other positions to cover the position that Mary Jo left.
Moved them up.
Exactly. And our office is doing quite well with the new staff that we have, and we're now looking forward to getting into our new offices in the Government Center at the Globe, and we'll start working on the 2020 budget in very short order, so. Again, congratulations, Mary Jo.
Commissioner Cummings?
Does Mary Jo want to say a few words?
If you'll let her say it at the end.
I'd just like to say thank you for, actually, for your assistance with the budget. It was kind of like baptism with fire at the beginning, but we got through it, we got the budget, as Commissioner O'Malley said, no tax increase. I appreciate your support in letting me go into the position to see what I could do with it. I'd also like to thank Tom for his hard work and support with that job as well.
Well, congratulations.
Who's here from your family?
I have my mom Claire here with me.
Claire, stand up, please. Who else, Mary Jo? Mom, you did a great job. Commissioner O'Terriani?
She did a great job. She's a wonderful person, and it's great to see a young person move up within the system. Very happy to have been able to support you in moving into this position, and I think it's great that it worked out well for you and for us.
We're always trying to promote from within. Like I said, there's no ceiling for working from county government, I don't care what position you're in. If you work really hard, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that you get as far as you possibly can in whatever department you're in, and Mary Jo has done that, and I would just like to congratulate you on a great budget.
Thank you.
And wish you a Merry Merry Christmas. But thank you for everything.
Thank you so much.
Okay, 18-0267, recognition for Patrick Dempsey. Where's Patrick at? Patrick, would you come forward, please? Come right over to the podium.
Good morning.
Morning.
Fifty years.
Almost, yeah.
Almost fifty years. Patrick has dedicated fifty years to Lackawanna County Regional Planning, and thirty-nine of them has been as Chairman.
Don't ask me how I did it. It's been a great ride, and I thank you for the opportunity to serve. Everybody's gotta give back something, and I enjoyed every day that I had a meeting and every meeting that we had. It's a great organization, the Planning Commission is so important. It's sort of buried among the weeds here, but it impacts every single citizen in the county and in the borough, the way you develop your cities and your counties. It's a great group of guys, I've always served, going back with Bobby Pennato, I served in his term, Chairman, and he had a great staff there. A little bit bigger than this today, but the work was a lot heavier, and I thank you for the opportunity, and I brought a few guests with me, if you don't mind.
We'd like to, let's have them all stand.
My family step up and say hello.
All right.
The newest one is William over in the corner with his father PJ.
Thank you for letting us have your dad, your husband, your father, for all these years to be with as grandfather, and please, thank you. Thank you for his time, and thank you for what you've done for the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Have a Merry Christmas, Commissioners.
Commissioner Cummings?
One and all, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the time I served, wish it could've been longer.
Thank you so much for the work that you've done and provided for our county and for watching out for all of us in our area. Thank you very much, I greatly appreciate it, and congratulations.
Appreciate it.
And you have a wonderful family there, they're all, I can't keep my eyes off the baby. Just adorable. Congratulations to what looks like a really great family as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Because of your work, many of your family members have been able to stay here. You've done a great job in creating what's going on in Lackawanna County today, and I'm sure you've worked with some very interesting people over those years, and thank you for everything you have done, and good luck in your future endeavors. I'm sure you're not finished yet.
Thank you.
Patrick, like I said before, thank you for all your time and your effort. It meant the world to our citizens of Lackawanna County. We have a certificate for you today, Certificate of Recognition, the County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Patrick Dempsey in honor of your nearly fifty years, it's fifty years, of dedicated service.
That's a gimme.
That's a gimme, absolutely. Service to the Board of Lackawanna County Regional Planning Commission by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Jerry O'Terriani, Lorraine A. Cummings. Come forward. Patrick, would your family like to come up? We could do a nice big group picture. Come on up, please.
Just watch your step, sir.
I know this is a big day.
I'm watching those all over here.
Congratulations, Patrick.
We could fit everyone up here, I think.
Sure.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll get a couple of the family members on the other side. Congratulations.
Here we go, everybody look in here, we're gonna take a couple. Everybody smile, everybody look, one, two, three. Can we just move in from that way a little bit, Commissioner Cummings? There we go, thank you, and everybody here, one, two, three, everybody look, smile.
Pizza.
Usually it's monkey poop in our house, but...
Just watch your step.
Beautiful family.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, watch your step.
Congratulations.
Ladies and gentlemen, that's what it's about, it's about giving back to your community, and I just wish everybody else did, but fifty years, congratulations, Patrick Dempsey. 18-0268, Small Business Spotlight.
We have Tig and Coonies. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I couldn't wait to get you in here.
Tell us a little bit about your business and how you got started.
Tig and Coonies started back in 2013 as an Etsy shop, so I'm primarily online, and my products all revolve around maps. So I go to the different craft fairs every year, to Lackawanna County Winter Marketplace this year, and past year's Holiday on the Square, and all the different events that we have throughout the year too. And then the rest of my business is done online. I also sell in the Waverly General Store and Lavish, I sell my products, and my products are all, like I said, based around vintage maps of the area throughout Lackawanna County. So over the last six years, I found that a lot of my customers, doesn't matter what age they are, who they are, everyone can appreciate a map. Even just last weekend at the, or two weekends ago at the Winter Marketplace, an eight-year-old boy ran up to me and said, "Do you have an Old Forge ornament?", because I make Old Forge, or I make ornaments of all the different towns in Lackawanna County. And I did have an Old Forge ornament, and he bought that with his money. And then later on that afternoon, someone in their eighties purchased something from me. I make everything from ornaments to coasters with maps on them, to etched map glasses, so I've been doing that for six years, I really enjoy my small business.
And when did you first start?
I'm sorry? In 2013.
And are you from our area?
Yes, I grew up in Archibald, went to Valley View, I live in Elephant now, and I work all out of my home in Elephant, it's home business and online business.
You started a home-based business and you grew, and now you're in the marketplace, and you know, I saw her after the last business that was in, I decided to go over and look out at the businesses, and I saw, that's what I noticed, was Old Forge was on a little candle. And now you do all these etchings?
Yeah, yeah.
Mark, I don't know if you could see it, but, I mean, it's kind of hard, but they're beautiful, I mean, and she does these, freehand, is this freehand, do you do this on your own?
With the, do I do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, with the laser etch machine, yeah.
That's talent, I mean, that is talent, honestly. Did you take a look at them? Look at that glass.
Yeah, it's a map from Scranton.
That's West Side. I'm gonna have to go and buy Old Forge's bottom. I did see them, and I was, I was looking at it, I couldn't believe how beautiful, and then of course, you know, I'm just a big supporter of small businesses around our area, and, you know, I am so happy to have you here, and another home-based business right in our area, and this is how you're making your living here, and it's a talent that you have, and you're doing something with that talent, you're pursuing it, and you are what I consider to be an inspiration to others who have a talent that they aren't sure if they can actually go forward and continue with the business on their own. You're doing it, as are others in our area, and I love to spotlight people like you, so thank you so much for what you do, for providing us with the beautiful items that you sell, and look forward to seeing more of them throughout our area. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, thank you so much for this opportunity, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
I'm just curious where you got the concept of using maps?
I know, a lot of people ask, thank you. About six or seven, well, about seven years ago, my friend was moving to Texas, and I wanted to get her a going-away gift, and I was thinking, what could I get her from here that would remind her of home? And then I thought about the map, it just came to my mind, and I made her these coasters of different areas that she's lived in in Pennsylvania, and she loved them, and then it just took off, then my friends wanted me to make them for them, and I also make map napkins. I gave Fran, why I call them mapkins, so there's a vintage map of Scranton on the napkin, and those are very popular as well.
Brilliant.
Great idea.
Thank you.
How did you do at the Lackawanna County Market?
Fantastic.
How did you do like the three days?
Oh, it was wonderful, yeah. I've been participating in that for five years now. I thought I saw Maureen McGuigan, she, when I first started, six years ago, they did a, like a Shark Tank event at the Everheart when I first got started, and Maureen McGuigan was part of that with the Arts Department, things like that through the county, and she was a big help with just getting me off the ground and helping me know where to go and what, you know, how to get started with all of this. So I've been participating in those for the last five years, and it's been fantastic because even though I'm an online business, there's so many people that don't shop online, or they don't, wouldn't even know how to get to my website to purchase something, so when I meet people in person, that's the time that I get to talk to them about their story, why they bought something, or why they would like to buy something, and you get those personal stories about, you know, their life and things like that, because maps have all, you know, very sentimental meaning behind them for all of us. We take a lot of pride in our towns.
So what did you think of the winter markets? The first time that we went under a big tent?
Loved it.
Did you love it?
Yeah, absolutely. I thought it was organized wonderfully. I keep it outside, I think that Kris Kringle, or whatever you want, you know, that whole feeling was just a lot more nicer, I guess.
Especially, it wasn't like, it wasn't just a tent with outsides, it was a tent with walls and heater blowers.
It was beautiful, yeah, and the lights, it was beautiful. I think it's just gonna continue to grow, to be bigger every year.
Great.
Yeah. Great job.
Your business, you have a lot of different businesses that you sell distributing your product through, then you're online, I mean, you came up with this yourself.
Yeah.
This is right from your heart, I could tell.
Thank you, thank you.
But congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We're here, and if you expand into a larger business, we're here to help you with economic development and everything else, our department is here to help any entrepreneur in Lackawanna County, but congratulations, looks like everything's going great so far.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. Thank you for this honor.
Commissioner Cummings has a certificate for you.
And your website?
Is TigandCoonies.com.
So today, we give a Certificate of Recognition, the County of Lackawanna Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Tig and Coonies in honor of achieving the designation of a small business spotlight in Lackawanna County, given this 19th day of December 2018 by Commissioner Patrick O'Malley, Commissioner Jerry O'Terriani, and myself, Commissioner Lorraine Cummings. Come on up to receive your work.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you so much, thank you.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Thanks for being involved in our winter market.
Oh, I love it, thank you so much.
Here we go, right here, everybody smile. Couple of them. One more.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, that's beautiful. I just, when I saw that, I saw, I thought, what a talent.
To be able to etch like that, no, that's amazing.
I can't even see them, I don't know how she...
They're out. Okay. Now is Mary Garman the audience today? Mary, do you'd like to come up and bring up Sandy Longo? Let's talk about Abington Community Library.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Sandy Longo, I am the Director at Abington Community Library, and I'd like to thank each of you for the opportunity to share what we do at the library. As a member of the library system, our resources and services are quite similar with the other member libraries. However, I'd like to take this time to share some core programs, events, classes, as well as some unique offerings at Abington. Given the fact that we're in December, it's for the season, we, on this past Monday, we celebrated our ninth annual Signing Santa, a collaboration that we do with the Scranton State School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Children, and we hold a Storytime for the children, and it's always well-attended, and again, it's in our ninth year, and pretty much our ninth year as well, is we do a Be a Senior to, Be a Santa to Senior program that we do collaboratively with Home Instead Senior Care in Clark Summit, and we literally collect hundreds of gifts that will be distributed throughout Lackawanna County through Home Instead Senior Care for seniors that are at home receiving services, and that may not otherwise receive a gift. We also do a lot for children, we have what's unique to... We have, what's unique to Abington is a Cursive Club, which is for children K to three. And ever since Common Core standards no longer require cursive to be taught in the schools, we, uh, noticed there was a gap, and there was an interest in our community for, uh, with parents wanting their children to learn to cursive, to not only learn how to write it, but to read it. Um, so that's been successful for the past four years. We have a lot of after-school clubs that reach out into, um, the math and science areas and Lego, as far as architecture and STEM. Um, and with the, uh, moving into the teens, we have a Teen Leadership Committee that's been active in our library since 2007, and they help the library with fundraising. Um, they do programs for younger children. They also expand their own horizons by participating in zine workshops and mindfulness and yoga classes at the library. Um, I'm also happy to share that in technology. We're the first library in Lackawanna County to host our very own podcast, Lexivor, and it's about all things literary. So that's been well-received this past year, and we're moving into our second year of hosting that. And we are also, um, extremely committed to adults and to their, to pro, special programming for them. Um, we have an Insulins, Insulin Pump Support Group that meets monthly at the library. We're committed to health literacy. Um, we also have a, a program that we started since 2007 as well, um, Families Helping Families, which meets every Wednesday night in the evening at 7:00 PM. And it's for those in addiction crisis, um, various addictions, including the opioid addiction, which also led ours, led us to actually just recently, December 6th, with our first training. Today is our second training of the Narcan, um, in administration of the Narcan, um, to educate our staff to not stand idly by in, if something were to happen. We have the training and we have the tools to help someone. So that's just a little bit about what we do. We also, um, as a last thought, we also combat senior isolation. We have a lot of programs during the morning and midday, um, from quilting and crocheting and knitting to strategic games, Scrabble, Mahjong. Um, and we also have a, a popular Latin language club that meets every Friday for seniors.
Very nice. Commissioner Cummings?
Um, wow, first of all, with all the lists that you do, thank you. Um, and one of the things that jumped out at me right away was, um, Common Core with the, uh, not, uh, teaching cursive writing, which I don't believe many parents even know that that had occurred until it's too late. And, um, it is voluntarily, uh, you know, you don't have to take Common Core classes for the parents, so they know that. They can opt out of Common Core. Um, one of the worst programs I think they ever brought down the pike, and, uh, horrible for the teachers, horrible for the students, and hopefully that's gonna go away, I, I'm not sure. But, uh, to not have cursive writing in our schools is absolutely atrocious, atrocious. And, um, you know, the school districts did not have to adopt that, but a lot of them did. So, um, a lot of our students have, uh, you know, lost the ability to be able to read cursive now. And we have a whole generation of, of students that, um, you know, can't read, uh, literature from, uh, going back, uh, actual original literature because they can't read cursive writing, which is, uh, I, I can't even believe that they did that to our students. It makes no sense at all, but Common Core made no sense in any of its subjects that it taught, uh, from math to writing to English, to anything. It, it's the worst program they ever initiated. Um, so I appreciate the fact that you're trying to pick up the slack for some of the program areas that were deleted from our children, um, that they were, that they should have been taught. So thank you for that, and I hope you
You're very welcome.
have some more programs that are gonna help them get, hopefully, through the math that is horrendous, maybe.
We do, we have a, we have a popular after-school math and science club.
Good for you.
As well.
Mm-hmm. So maybe we'll just send our kids to the libraries instead of the school districts. They might learn more, um, especially with Common Core. But thank you so much for the work that you're doing, I greatly appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much, and I just want to point out with the cursive, um, I have to say that a lot of people speak to the, to the documents that, you know, children growing up, they won't be able to read. Um, my primary concern personally and professionally was the intergenerational workforce, um, because I had experienced it, which is actually, um, the catalyst for the program itself. Um, because one of the, um, younger people that work at the library, they put the books away. They saw me working, they saw me writing, and they asked me if that was calligraphy.
Yeah.
And, and I looked at him, and I thought he was kidding. Um, he sends, he's a very smart young man, and he's at Temple last year, in his final year at Temple, and he's moving on to Columbia University Law. But it still amazed me that he thought I was writing in calligraphy. And, um, it, that inspired me to see what the parents, to do an interest survey, to see if there was interest, because my concern is more, I guess, um, basic, um, in that, an intergenerational workforce. I'm not going anywhere for a while, and they're gonna have to read what I'm writing to them. Um, not everything is communication via email. So it just amazed me that he thought it was calligraphy.
Uh, I, I've seen that, and, and to replace, I mean, our Constitution, you know, our, our original documents from our country would not be able to be read by some of the graduates of today because there was no, um, you know, nothing taught to them in cursive. They wouldn't be able to read it. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's shocking that, that this has occurred. So thank you very much. And, um, I actually bought one of those, um, uh, tablets where they used to teach us in kindergarten, first grade with the As, and, you know, I have them for my own grandchildren because there was no way I was gonna allow them to not know how to write cursive. Um, and, you know, uh, just to replace it with keyboard is crazy, you know? Electronic signatures, that's why we have electronic signatures now. Um, but, uh, thank you very much. I think what you're doing is extremely important for our children and our, our young adults. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Nottieriany?
Again, I think, I agree with Commissioner Cummings. I find it hard to understand or hard to, hard to believe that this is the direction that we've gone in. But because of people like you, hopefully that'll, that'll change, and you'll keep moving forward. And thank you for your work, and keep going forward, and I appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
I'd like to thank Mary Garman. Um, we started this a couple of meetings ago. We wanted to showcase which each and every library in Lackawanna County does. And, um, I mean, this, this isn't the same old library any longer, any of them. You know what I mean, DVDs, teaching people how to do resumes. Um, it's, it's, it's more of a community center, anything. You have senior events, you got things going on. You make sure that everybody, if anything happens or someone gets sick, you're able to accommodate that situation. You're, you're, there's always something going on. You know, and like you said, the big thing is, um, my own sons, um, the two of them. I actually taught them how to do their signature in cursive because they don't teach cursive. And they were looking at it, it's funny because I go, and it's just, I said, it's so much easier just to, to just, to, to write it in cursive, because you can just go like boom, boom, boom. It's quicker than printing. And it's, it really is. It's, I'm hoping it's something that's not lost forever, but, but you're trying to keep it alive, and, and I'm thrilled that you're, you're at the forefront in the library, making sure of that. But you said, their library is beautiful, and there's a lot of opportunities there for all ages. And like you said, it's not just about going in and getting a book and leaving. There's a lot to do all day, accessibility computers, opportunities galore. So, thank you for what you do.
Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to share, thank you.
Thank you. Mary, go ahead.
Um, I just want to mention that the Abington Community Library is one of our busiest libraries.
Yes.
And as always, if, uh, if you hear about something that you think is interesting, and, um, it's happening at the Abington Library, your Lackawanna County Library Card will get you in there to any program or any service that, that's offered there, um, as is the case with any of our 10 libraries around the county. And I just wanted to do a bit of a commercial as well. Um, you know that we operate the Library Express Bookstore on the second floor of the marketplace at Steamtown, and I'd just like to remind anybody, if you have readers in your family and you're looking for a last-minute gift, we have a lot of great bestsellers and other kinds of, of new books. And if you have a library card, you get a discount.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for coming in. Okay. I would just like to show everyone, you know, um, today's the last meeting in the Commissioners' Conference Room at 200 Adams Avenue, and we invited all the Commissioners, and I'd like to thank Commissioner Washo and Commissioner Petnato for coming in. But I'd like to show everybody what exactly happened and what's going to happen in the next so many weeks. You know, we already moved SLHDA, Children Youth Services, Aerie Aging, and we brought back, um, Domestic Relations. They're working on the third and fourth floor over the new governmental cen, Government Center at the Globe. So I'd like to have everybody, I'm gonna walk over and show everyone the map. Lady, ladies and gentlemen, we had thirteen locations. Here we are with, we're currently at the Administration Building, Bank Towers Building, Bricks Building, Brooks Building, the Brooks, Bricks Building, Brooks Building, Courthouse, Gateway Center, the Mall at Steamtown, the Murray Building, um, Scranton Electric Building, um, Juvenile Detention at 415 North Washington Avenue, and 614 North Washington Avenue, that's the Work Release. So we have thirteen different places in downtown Scranton. And that's not even counting voter registration, which is on Stafford Avenue, and Domestic Relation, which was up in Mayfield. That's thirteen locations throughout Lackawanna County. Now, we went from those thirteen to five. Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe, 123 Wyoming Avenue. Number two is Lackawanna County Gateway Center, which will house the District Attorney's Office, Lackawanna County Visitors Bureau, and Penn State Cooperatives Extension. Number three, Lackawanna County Work Release, which is exactly where it stayed. Number four, the Bricks Building, which holds adult probation. And number five, Lackawanna County Courthouse, which keeps all the services that we always have. So we reduced by nine locations. So, excuse me, like eight locations. So I think that this was a tremendous undertaking by this Board of Commissioners. And, um, if we didn't have the board that had the guts to move forward, and we had to do it early, it wasn't something you could wait a year or two on. We did this by April 26th of 2016. And now this is what we're going to have by the middle of January. So I would just like to thank my fellow Commissioners for the hard work, our staff, everyone that was involved. And we are gonna be having a ribbon-cutting sometime in the beginning of January, and that will be soon to be announced. But this weekend, we'll be moving in another floor or two. So every weekend, and so people realize, it's not like you just move everybody one shot. County government has to keep running. We have to make sure some of these offices are necessities, Children Youth Service, Aerie Aging. You have to make sure they're running. So on Friday afternoon, now they're moving stuff all week long, but they're still operating. Friday afternoon, we move everything over. So on Monday morning, they're up and running. So I'd just like to thank, I'm, thank my maintenance staff for a fine job. They did buildings and grounds, and that's under, uh, Director Kevin Shaughnessy, and just everyone else, Jim Rodway, uh, there's so many people to thank. Everybody knows who they are, but thank you, and we'll congratulate all of them at the ribbon-cutting. But this is where we're at right now. So I think that county government is consolidated, and it's accessible to everybody now. So I'd just like to thank everybody that was involved. Now, at this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Petnato to come up to the podium. And, uh, let's, let's talk about the past, the future, and the in-between. Um, you wanna step right over to the podium? This building was purchased by Commissioner Robert Petnato, Charles Luger, and Ed Zippe in 1972. And it has served the population of Lackawanna County well. It was the old store in Fister Building, retailing fine furniture, furnishings for home and office, opened its doors in 1923 with a brand-new building on Adams Avenue and Spruce Street. Commissioner, talk to us about the building when you bought it.
Well, we didn't actually buy it. Uh, our predecessors bought the building. We, we, uh, developed it. Uh, uh, so I'm, I'm privileged to be here. Thank you for inviting us, me back, and, and my fellow Commissioner Mike and, and the others. Uh, we, we, uh, I'm proud to say that, uh, I participated in the first meeting in this room, the first Commissioners' Meeting in this room. Today, I'm participating in the last. That's, I guess, something to be said for, for what, uh, what's happening here today.
Modern medicine.
Yeah, right. Amen, Mike. Amen. Uh, anyhow, I was, I was treated to some, uh, a modern medical miracle, uh, earlier, uh, last month, not this month, uh, in, uh, mid-November. And, uh, I'm here to talk about it, so, so, uh, so that's a, a credit to, uh, some brilliant minds and, and marvelous, uh, uh, medical care that we have in the, in the United States of America.
That's right.
And, uh, I'm glad we waited for the flag, okay? Because that's very, very important to me. But there's a few things that happened here today that, that, uh, I'm especially proud of. First off, uh, thank you for honoring Pat Dempsey. Pat Dempsey is an old and dear friend, was on the Planning Commission. I'm sorry to say, not initially appointed by Charlie Luger and myself, but, but, uh, uh, he, he presided over the Planning Commission during, uh, uh, the entire 12 years that I spent as a County Commissioner. And, uh, it was, uh, very, very nice that you honored him here today. He's been a business icon in Lackawanna County, uh, an extraordinary family man, okay? And a community giver, uh, for his entire life. And, and, and thanks for honoring Pat Dempsey. Uh, Mary Garman, okay? Uh, Luger and Petnato started the county library system. People said, thank you. People said we were crazy. We advocated for a tax to be exclusive, uh, to the county library system. And, uh, people said, nobody ever gets re-elected if you advocate for a tax. Well, the people of Lackawanna County wanted their library, and they voted for the tax, and, and it passed. And today, it's, uh, very, very comforting to me to see how the library has grown and the extraordinary job that you're doing in the Abingtons and the county library system. And the fact that you honored them here today on the last meeting in this room is another special reason for me to be here. So thanks, uh, uh, for having us, and, uh, it brings back a lot of memories, uh, uh, sitting in here, and, and, uh, I'm, I'm delighted with the, the way our community is, is growing and prospering. Thank you.
Bob, stay there for one second. Commissioner?
Well, of course, I'm obviously extremely proud to have you here and, um, honored to honor you. I, I'm, I'm just with our fellow, our previous Commissioners, I'm just, I've been to many of Commissioner, uh, Washo's meetings. I did not have the privilege of being at, um, your meetings. I, I always gave him my time.
We're still in school.
Poor Mike had to put up with me giving him a hard time all the time. You and I probably won't, we'd be on the same. But, um, you know, I'm just honored to have you here. Thank you so much for coming. I hope that you come and, uh, see the new building when we open, or anytime you'd like. And, um, it's, it's beautiful, and, uh, you know, it's, we're here and we're able to continue the work that, that you all were working on, and, uh, proud to be here. Thank you so much for all the work you've done and, uh, and for starting the library. I did look at the library tax, and I saw how that was passed. And, um, they are doing a tremendous job for the community, and the Children's Library's doing a great job. Um, and I'm happy to, to spotlight them as well. So thank you so much for the work you've done in the past and for the things that you've provided to our county as a county commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Great job.
Commissioner Nottieriany?
Bob, you're an old friend, and you've done a great, you did a great job as a Commissioner. Uh, besides the library system, you also brought us Montage Mountain. Uh, you and Charlie Luger did a, a wonderful job. Uh, it's, uh, it's an honor to have you back here and, uh, keep up the good work in Lackawanna County with you and your wonderful family.
Thank you, Jerry.
Um, we wouldn't even have a Parks and Recreation Department. They set up Parks and Recreation. I was talking to some of the older maintenance people that worked for the parks for years, and they, um, John Esman, um, gotta try to think of all the names. But, um, they said that they started off in a basement, you had some boats and tables, and you were figuring. off in a basement, you had some boats and tables, and you were figuring out where the land was going to be, and it started with McDade Park.
That's right. Of course, Joe McDade was one of my role models in my whole life. I think that he was the most extraordinary public figure that ever walked in Lackawanna County. And we named the park after him because he got us all the money.
That's a good reason.
Yeah, absolutely. But there's a couple of interesting stories, one about McDade Park. He called me one day, and I, after a few years serving here, when they said McDade was on the phone, I rolled my eyes a little bit, because I knew I was going to get a job out of it, okay? And he said, after the small talk at the beginning of the conversation, he said, "I got a couple bucks, okay, to do a model mine. Where do you, where do you, do you have any ideas?" I said, "Well, you sure I have an idea." I said, "McDade Park, it happens to be that there's a mine entrance that's in the park, and we're not sure what to do with it, okay, but it would make a wonderful thing if we could put a mine tour in there." He said, "Well, do you think it's possible?" He says, "I'm onto something here. I got an IOU coming for some Department of the Interior appropriation." He says, "See what you can do." So, I hung up the phone, and I said, "How the hell am I going to figure out if there's a coal mine tour?" I mean, I know a little, I'm a civil engineer by trade, I know a little bit about mining, but not a lot. So, I called my old friend Roger Howell. Rog was a lifelong resident of Taylor Borough, and a retired mining engineer, and I had known him from my work at PennDOT. So, I called Rog, I said, "Rog, that old mine up in McDade Park, do you know anything about it?" "Absolutely," he said, "I've been in it many times," he says, "and I know where the key to the padlock is." I says, "Can we go down and look at that?" "Sure," he said. We made an appointment, and off I go with my cadre, our chief clerk, Department of Parks and Recreation at the time, Andy Suma, and we got up there, and Rog met us there with the old mining helmets, and all the paraphernalia to go down in the mine, including the carbide lamp. If the lamp goes out, there's no oxygen, you better get the hell out of there, because that's the danger signal. It's not only to see where you're going, it was also to warn you that there was any damage. So, we head down the gangway into the mine. And my trusted staff are not ahead of me, they're behind us. Roger and I are walking down the mine, and the group is behind, and it's darker and darker and colder and colder. And we finally get to a point in the mine where there had been a cave-in. There was this huge pile of debris, and if you looked up above, there was the cavity of where the rock caved in and blocked up the entire gangway. So, I assumed, maybe prematurely, that the tour was over, and that the mine would never, we would never be able to recover it and make a tour out of it. And as we proceeded down the mineshaft, my trusty associates kept getting further and further behind. But to my chagrin, here's this seventy-year-old man, Roger Howell, and he climbs up the bank where the cave-in was, over the top of the bank and down the other side. Well, I said, "I can't let the old guy go down there by himself." Now, don't forget, I'm thirty years old, I was a young kid at the time. I climbed the bank on top of it, okay, and down over the other side, and down to the bowels of the mine. And as you well know, we were able to use the money that Joe McDade provided for us, and we built that mine tour. It was opened under the commissioners that succeeded us, okay, but the tour was open, but we built that mine, and I was the first one down there, okay, besides Roger Howell. The second one was when we bought Merly Sarnoski Park. And there was only one way to really test the land, to see whether it was suitable for a park, and that was you had to go fish the pond. So, we set up a group of county employees to have a camping weekend with the permission of the owners of the land, okay, before we bought it. And we went up to the Merly Sarnoski and pitched our tents, and we had an old truck, during the course of the campaign, we bought a, what I would call a bread truck, a step van, and we painted it all up Luger-Petnato, and it just about ran. I mean, we used it, like Bob Bullis uses his truck, okay, to park it at various, varying places, okay? But any rate, we took that, somehow or other, we got that up the hill, it was dirt roads, and we parked it up by the pond, and we slept in the truck, and we fished the lake. My son Bobby Jr. was there, what he remembers to this day, that we had that, so that was the acid test as to whether or not we were going to be able to buy that land and make a park out of it. And of course, it's a beautiful park, and a beautiful piece of Lackawanna County, and oh, they're just two old stories.
Great stories.
From an old storyteller.
You should write a book.
I did that.
Honest to God, you should.
And that story's in the book.
Okay, Commissioner Washo, would you like to get up and say a few words?
You know, she said a few words.
Hey, he's a commissioner.
Oh, Mike, I'm sure you won't have a lot for words. Watch yourself.
Well, hello, everyone.
Hi, how are you?
Morning, Commissioner.
Kind of nice to be back. I'll be brief, because I wasn't
Mike, go on, we want to hear what you have to say.
As Bobby was. So, as a result of that, I'm going to limit what I have to say, but applaud what he had to say. Because a lot was accomplished during your tenure, and it's nice to hear it recited again. You know, maybe this move to the Globe will cause people, cause taxpayers, to become cognizant of the fact that they encounter county government every day of their lives almost, in some way or another. Now, what do I mean by that? Well, you know, when you go to vote, you encounter county government. And we're one of the few counties in the state that has the paper, I don't know if we're one of the few, but we're one of the larger counties that has a paper ballot in the state, and we hear all the conversation about the need to upgrade elections equipment, and we're being told we need to upgrade ours, but we're much further along than those states that have touchscreen with no total, with nothing but a total, no real record of the count that can go back and be checked. You know, when I, when Corey O'Brien and I ran, we were blessed with an unusual victory that we didn't even believe we had won, because we had won at every single polling place. It was unbelievable. We didn't believe it. We didn't accept the fact that we had won until several days later, because they had to do what they did, a hand count, because there was a paper ballot there. So, when we had our opportunity to make a decision on voting equipment, we made the decision to get the equipment that would involve nothing but a scanner. You get a paper ballot, runs through a scanner, and that's that. So, county government touches us in ever so many ways, but it's more than just about voting. And by combining these various county agencies, people will have a greater understanding of what county government's all about, and may hold county government more accountable as a result of that, because it's the taxpayers who pay for county government. So, what are these other services? Children and youth, different name now, but imagine, imagine the kids that come here that ride up and down on these elevators with really garbage bags with their clothes as they get ready to be reassigned to another family as a part of programs that care for our young people. Imagine seniors that have been exploited by family members, by strangers. The Office of Aging is here. It's one significant office after another in the human and social services, whether you have a child that has a problem with, or an adult that has an addiction to drugs, whether it's someone that has some sort of a disability, an intellectual challenge. It's here, it's a county agency that provides those services. So, for me, that's what I remember most about my time here, is becoming familiar with and trying to support the endeavors of those folks that work in those areas. County government really is the closest that people come to government, because of all the umbrella activities that it encompasses. So, for me, it was a great stay. I was here for six and a half years. I left on my own, and I was glad to have had the experience, and as I was going out the door, I said to myself, "Why are you leaving?" Because there is the opportunity to do so much good, and there's a terrific workforce here in this county, and I hope that the workforce will embrace this new location. I hope the taxpayers will find it convenient to access services. And I can't say that I was at the first meeting here, but I can't say that I'm at the last meeting here. I'm grateful for that, and I wish everybody well. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays.
Michael, stay up there for a second. Commissioner Cummings?
Well, we've had our conversations back and forth, and now you're standing at the podium. You want to yell at me for a minute?
Not at all. I never got angry with you.
No, you did not. You were always a gentleman.
I answered every question.
Yes, you did, and I appreciate that. And I do appreciate the work that you and Corey O'Brien did, you did, I do. The only thing is, I still didn't get rid of that Wi-Fi, but I'm working on it. But anyway, I am so happy that you're here, Mike, I really am, and I've seen a lot of the ordinances that you've passed, and there's things that we learn when we get in here that were worked on, that we weren't aware of as public, you know, being a part of the public. So, I do admire your work, and I appreciate you coming in and wishing us well on our new endeavor, which you helped us to obtain through your financial fiduciary responsibility to our county. So, I thank you for that, and I thank Commissioner O'Brien for that, because you did help us to make sure that we were financially stable, and gave us the opportunity to have a surplus that we're sitting on and maintaining, so that we can have our credit rating remain stable. And I'm, we owe that to you and Commissioner O'Brien, and I would never take that away from a previous administration. And obviously, to Commissioner Petnato, we owe our Parks and Rec and so many, many other things.
The importance of history here. Bob talked about the work they did at Merly Sarnoski, and he talked about the work they did at the McDade Park, and that work continues, and the park system has also been expanded. The Covington Park was done really primarily with Bill Davis, who just did tremendous work as Parks and Recreation Director. And work was done at Merly with Pavilion, and work was done at Aylesworth and some of these other parks that were acquired before we had a chance to get here. So, that continuity is important to ensure that taxpayers have recreational opportunities that they might not otherwise have, because the opportunities are free.
Well, I appreciate it, and we all stand on the shoulders of previous administrations. So, thank you so much for the work that you've done. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Terriany?
Michael, it's always a pleasure to see you. I was instrumental in
You helped get me here.
Got you there.
That's right, yeah.
And it's a proud thing that that happened, but the, your fiscal responsibility, along with Corey, and followed by Jimmy Wansack and Corey, is what got us in a position where it was possible to do many of the things we were able to do. You did a great job, you're an honorable person, and sorry to see you leave when you did, but you went on to bigger and better things, and keep working, and thanks for all your work in the past.
Commissioner, I'd like to thank you for helping to lay the groundwork, because there was groundwork that had to be laid. And we took that baton and moved it forward. Our audits done on time from 2011 forward, our directors making sure they live within their budgets, just so many different things. Getting rid of the, and you lived through this part, the, what would be the, what fee was that, John? The surveillance fee that you guys had, because of the, how we were, that our finances were so bad off, you know, as high as a million dollars and as low as $400,000, that's all gone, no surveillance fee, a stable bond rating. We've had opportunities, we've done a lot of great things. I'd like to thank you for handing the baton off to us to make, you know, make a lot of great things happen in Lackawanna County. It really matters to all the citizens. But I just want to go over a couple, just some of the things, there's so many things that went on. 1972 is the timeline. Some of the things that just went on in the Commissioners' Conference Room, things that people don't want to talk about, tax increases, tax decreases, holding the line on taxes, something that we've been able to do. Coal Mine Tour, Parks and Recreation Department, no Parks and Recreation Department till 1972 forward, they started to build them. The Trolley Museum, the rebirth of baseball, the airport build-out, the visitor's center, county long-term center, changing the Red Barons to the Yankees, the new PNC Field, Home of the Rail Riders, something that I had to be, was part of, Lackawanna County Amphitheater, Bridge Constructions, Montage Mountain, the county fair, which will be coming up this year, Covington Park, Aylesworth Park. And last but not least, something that I've been thriving for, and another, also Commissioner Cummings has been pushing for, and I've been pushing since 2011, consolidation of government, the Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe, and also working into the future on a central court center out on Wyoming Avenue. This government is moving forward all the time, and there is so much more that I didn't even bring up that has happened here. So many great things. And the library system, I didn't realize the library system, exactly how that happened. Thank you for the history lesson on that. But like you said, I mean, county government works on behalf of the citizens every day. Colts, yeah, Colts, Colts, but it really does matter.
It's a good idea to feature the libraries that you're meeting, because it
Yeah.
For obvious reasons, I don't need
So, people know what they have in their backyard, Mike, because they wouldn't, a lot of people wouldn't know what they have in their library.
I don't want to talk too much, I see that Bob Bullis has been driven out of here.
Now he knows how it feels.
What in the heck is going on? I'm still in charge.
And like I was saying, so, so much, so much more, and last but not least, January of 2019, this administration building will be going back on the tax roll, something that this government was about. I mean, we might have taken the Globe Store off the tax roll, but we're putting this one right back on, with five floors of beautiful apartments going to be here, and retail in downtown Scranton, investing $18 million into a dead 100-block of Wyoming Avenue, and a half heartbeat 200-block of Wyoming Avenue, injecting with 600 employees that will all be there by January 15th. So, I'd just like to thank our commissioners for coming in, it's our privilege, and I'd like to thank all of you, thank you both of you, for laying the groundwork and all the great things that have gone on in Lackawanna County. Thank you very much. Yeah, absolutely, sure. And so you guys know, there will be a special dedication to the building, you'll be invited, and there's going to be something you guys will be very happy to see that's part of you that's going to be at the new building. see that's part of you that's going to be at the new building.
Up here, up here. Make me look thin.
Just be in the middle.
I don't want to be in any campaign literature.
Hang on a minute, I've got to get a little on you.
Everybody look here. Here we go, one, two, three. Let's put the flash on. Okay, we got one, two. Smile, take a couple. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, whatever. Appreciate it.
I read everything, good.
Donnie.
Hello, Gary. How are you, sir? Is it here?
No, it sits at the...
Let's not sit on those.
Prison Board's out in jail. You want the money? I'm going to move the one just to save it. I don't want you to stay around out there. Salary Board.
I got to call the judge.
It's at the prison.
It's at the prison?
Opportunity for the public to address the Board. On agenda items only. Okay. Ordinance second reading 18-0257.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is an ordinance, County of Lackawanna, accepting a general obligation bonds. It's an ordinance at the County of the Board of Commissioners at the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, setting forth its intent to issue one or more series of general obligation bonds of the county in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $35 million pursuant to the Act of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, known as the Local Government Unit Debt Act, finding that a private sale by negotiation is in the best financial interest of the county, determining that such bonds shall evidence non-electoral debt of the county, specifying that such indebtedness is to be incurred to provide funds for a certain project of the county which consists of the following: One, currently refunding the county's outstanding general obligation bond Series B of 2010; Two, the payment of the cost of terminating an interest rate management agreement relating to the bonds, if applicable; and Three, paying the costs and expenses of issuance of the bonds, setting forth the reasonable estimated remaining useful lives of the capital projects that are to be refinanced by the bonds, accepting a proposal for the purchase of such bonds by private sale by negotiation, authorizing specified officers of the county to contract with the paying agent for its services in connection with the bonds, creating one or more sinking funds in connection with the bonds to the extent required by the Act designating the paying agent to be the sinking fund depository, authorizing and directing specified officers at the county to do, to take, and to perform certain specified, required, necessary, or appropriate acts to effect the issuance of the bonds, including without limitation the preparation of a debt statement and borrowing base certificate, and the filing of specified documents with the Department of Community and Economic Development, all of required by the Act. Providing, when this ordinance shall become effective, authorizing and directing the preparation, execution, and delivery of all other required documents and the taking of all other required action, providing for severability of provisions, providing for the repealing of all ordinances or parts of ordinance insofar as the same shall be inconsistent therewith. Whereas, the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania is a Home Rule Charter county operating under the Home Rule Charter and operational laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Whereas, the county, in contemplation of the issuance and sale of one or more series of its general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $35 million to provide funds for and towards certain projects of the county, has determined that the bonds shall be offered for private sale by negotiation pursuant to the provisions of the Local Unit Government Debt Act of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of the county has determined that such bonds will be issued as one or more series of general obligation bonds designated generally as the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania General Obligation Bond Series of 2020. Whereas, the Board has determined to accept the proposal of Benning &amp; Scattergood Incorporated of West Conshohocken, Pennsylvania, as representative for the purchase of the bonds, such sale to be conditioned upon, among other things, the receipt of approval of the Department of Economic and Community Development of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas, the county has heretofore issued its $58,540,000 original aggregate principal amount general bond Series B of 2010, a portion of which remains outstanding. And whereas, the county desires to authorize the current refunding of the outstanding, refund the 2010B bonds for the purpose of reducing the total debt service over the life of the 2010B bonds. Now therefore, being enacted and ordained by the County Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County in lawful session duly assembled as follows. Pursuant to the provisions of this ordinance, the bond hereby authorizes, directs the issuance of one or more series of general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $35 million to be designated generally as County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania General Obligation Bond Series of 2020. Whereas, the Board has determined to accept the proposal of Benning &amp; Scattergood Incorporated of West Conshohocken, Pennsylvania, as representative for the purchase of the bonds, such sale to be conditioned upon, among other things, the receipt of approval of the Department of Economic and Community Development of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And whereas, the county has heretofore issued its $58,540,000 original aggregate principal amount general bond Series B of 2010, a portion of which remains outstanding. And whereas, the county desires to authorize the current refunding of the outstanding, refund the 2010B bonds for the purpose of reducing the total debt service over the life of the 2010B bonds. Now therefore, being enacted and ordained by the County Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County in lawful session duly assembled as follows. Pursuant to the provisions of this ordinance, the bond hereby authorizes, directs the issuance of one or more series of general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $35 million to be designated generally as County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania General Obligation Bond Series of 2020. A brief description of the project to be funded with the proceeds of the bonds as follows: One, currently refunding 2010B bonds to the payment of the cost of terminating the interest rate management agreement, if applicable; and Three, paying the cost of issuing of the bonds. The remaining realistic estimated useful lives of the capital projects that were refinanced by the proceeds of the 2010B bonds, which shall be refinanced as a portion of the proceeds of the bonds are at least 20 years. In connection with the issuance and sale of the bonds, the Board, as required by the provisions of the Act, hereby finds, determines, and states, A, that the purpose of the current refunding of the 2010B bonds is to reduce the total debt service over the life of the 2010B bonds; and B, that the current refunding of the refunded 2010B bonds is authorized and permitted under and pursuant to the provisions of Section 8241 of the Act. Subject to the approval of the Department, as required by the provisions of the Act, the Board shall and hereby accept the proposal of the purchaser for the purchase of the bonds in accordance with the terms and conditions of this ordinance and purchaser's proposal dated December 19, 2018. The proper officers at the county are hereby authorized, empowered, and directed to contract with Fidelity Deposit and Discount Bank of Dunmore, Pennsylvania as paying agent for such other paying agent as shall be a bank or bank or trust company authorized to do business in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The bond shall be executed in the name and on behalf of the county by the true and facsimile signature of at least two members of the Board, and the true or facsimile official seal of the county shall be affixed thereto and attested by the true and facsimile signature of the Chief of Staff, Acting Chief of Staff, or Assistant Chief of Staff of the county. The county hereby covenants to create and hereby create pursuant to Section 8221 of the Act a sinking fund for which series of bonds issued, each such sinking fund shall be known as the sinking fund County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania General Obligation Bond Series of 2020. The proper officers at the county are hereby authorized and directed to deliver the bonds to the purchaser upon due resignation and authentication thereof as provided for herein, upon receipt of full proper payment of the purchase price thereof, provided however that such delivery shall be effected after the Department has certified the approval of the Act pursuant to Section 8204 of the Act. The county hereby appoints and engages Stevens &amp; Lee Professional Corporation to act as bond counsel and special counsel to the county in connection with the interest rate management agreement, and hereby reappoints Financial Solutions LLC to act as financial advisor to the county in connection with the issuance of the bonds and to facilitate the intent of this ordinance. All expenses incurred in connection with this issuance of this bond shall be paid out of the proceeds derived from the issuance of the bonds, and the Chairman or Vice Chairman of the Board are authorized and approved of the request of payment of such expenses and to pay such expenses. The officers and officials of the county are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver such other documents and to take such other action as may be necessary and appropriate in order to effect the execution, issuance, sale, and delivery of the bonds, all in accordance with this ordinance. All ordinances or parts of ordinances insofar as the same shall be inconsistent with here, shall be and hereby expressly repealed. This ordinance shall become effective in accordance with Section 8003 of the Act. This is the second reading, so we will require a vote on this today, Commissioners. Here to address the Board on this is Tom Durkin, our Chief Financial Officer. Tom?
Morning, Tom. Thank you. Commissioners, as I've previously stated, current tax law doesn't allow us to do advance refundings of tax-free debt. So, we have an opportunity, if we were able to do an advance refunding, to save some money on interest rates, because the 2010 issue is at a little bit higher rates, and interest rates right now are advantageous enough that we would save money if we were able to do the refunding. Since we can't do the advance refunding, because these bonds aren't callable in 2020, our financial advisor has presented with a forward interest rate hedge in order to lock in the rates that are existing now, so that we can pretty much guarantee ourselves savings of, in excess of $2 million, somewhere probably between $2 and $1/2, or $2 million and $2 and $1/2 dollars, or $1 million. So, that's what this is all about, and I'm actually going to turn the microphone over to Mike Vin, the county's financial advisor, so we can explain it in a little more detail.
Good morning, Commissioners, happy holidays.
Mike, how are you?
Tom basically went through it. This is very similar to the transaction that the county locked in last year. Again, directly related, we would just do traditional fixed-rate bonds or refund, similar to a mortgage, from a higher interest rate to a lower interest rate, if the tax law had not precluded us from doing that now that became effective at the beginning of this year. So, this gives you that opportunity to lock in the rates today to be issued in the future when these bonds become callable, in this case, 2020. And at that time, you would just issue traditional fixed-rate bonds, and it would go from a higher interest rate to a lower interest rate. And as Tom said, right now, that looks like we would lock in a little bit over $2 million net savings to the county. In addition, those refunding bonds that would be issued, fixed-rate refunding bonds that would be issued in 2020 would not extend the term of the existing debt. Right now, the 2010 bonds go out, mature in 2035. The 2020 bonds would also mature in 2025. Again, we're not extending. It would just go from a simple higher, you know, payment to a lower payment, and we're able to accomplish that through the forward interest rate hedge. These are net numbers, and they're based on rates today. If the county would approve this, we would look to lock this in first thing tomorrow to, you know, effectuate and complete the transaction, and then wait till 2020 to actually issue the fixed-rate bonds. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this point.
I would just like to say that, you know, the Board of Commissioners has been very diligent in making sure whenever we have an opportunity to fight savings and to bring down the rate on our bonds, that we've done that, even going out to 2020.
Correct.
So, whether we're here or not, there's going to be some sort of savings there, whether it's this Board of Commissioners or another Board of Commissioners in 2020.
Correct.
So, I know we've been very diligent. I'd like to thank our Chief Financial Officer for being there with all of us and all of you. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you for alerting us to this and for the opportunity we had.
Not a problem.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for general obligation bonds. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Resolutions 18-0256?
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a resolution approving current payables. Be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers from 273562 through 274399 inclusive, totaling $2,333,432.30; and electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $751,773.60.
Controller DiVillo, how's everything going?
Good, Commissioners. All payables are in order and have been audited and approved by the Controller's Office. In this set of payables are two legal fee invoices related to the Attorney General's prison probe totaling $2,250 to Donna Tony and Crichton Law Firm.
Does the Board have any questions for our controller? Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Gary. 18-0254?
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution authorizing the county to obtain blanket bonds of crime insurance to satisfy the public official's bonding requirements. Whereas, on November 23, 2011, Act 106 became effective immediately authorizing counties to obtain blanket bonds or crime insurance covering county officers and employees, replacing prior requirements that certain individual officers at a county have separate bonds. And whereas, pursuant to Subsection 1130A of the Act, which requires the County Board of Commissioners as the governing body of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, to establish a procedure by which it shall annually determine the form and require amount of required security that will be reasonably sufficient to protect against the risk of loss in compliance with the subsection of the Act. And whereas, Subsection 1130B of the Act permits the County Board of Commissioners to instruct their county risk manager to compile and submit information relevant to the determination of the amount of any required security under subsection A. And whereas, Section 1129 of the Act requires that the form of blanket bond or crime insurance obtained in compliance with the Act shall be approved by the governing body of the county after review by the county solicitor and in consultation with the risk manager. Be it resolved that the county is hereby required to adopt the following procedure for compliance with the provisions of Section Pennsylvania Act 106. The county risk manager is hereby designated to submit information to the Board of Commissioners prior to the close of every calendar year for an amount of the security of the risk manager recommends that the county maintain during the succeeding year and to provide the information as set forth below to enable the Board of Commissioners to place into force the blanket bond or crime insurance required by the Act of the succeeding year. Two, in the course of performing the duties assigned under Section 1, the county risk manager shall confer with the county solicitor to determine the form and content of the blanket bond or crime insurance, which will comply with the provisions of this Act. Three, the county risk manager will obtain competitive proposals from the county's designated broker of record for the blanket bond or crime insurance that will comply with the provisions of the Act, and upon receipt and review of the competitive proposal, the county's designated broker of record at least two weeks prior to the close of every calendar year, the county risk manager shall present the Board of Commissioners for its consideration and approval, the form and the amount required, together with the recommendation as to the blanket bond or crime insurance that will satisfy the requirements as set forth. And is Rick Jones here now, or is he... Oh, there you go, Rick. How are you, Rick? Our risk management director is here to explain this.
Good morning, Commissioners. Your consideration this morning is Resolution 18-254. If approved, this resolution will enable the county to continue in compliance with Act 106 of 2011, which took effect on November 23, 2011. Act 106 allows the county to purchase a blanket bond with faithful performance of duties endorsement to cover all of its elected and appointed officials, excluding the county treasurer, who by law must post his or her own bond. Our blanket bond also covers the election board, the pension board, the prison board, and the salary board. The blanket bond also includes crime and employee dishonesty coverage for all of the county's 1,200 employees. The blanket bond is posted annually with the Pennsylvania Department of State through the county's Recorder of Deeds Office. Our county's current blanket bond has a $2 million limit, and the annual premium is $4,987, or approximately $4 per county employee. This blanket bond replaces the antiquated miscellaneous bonding limits previously required of county public officials. For example, in 2011 and prior, county commissioners were only required to post an individual bond of $7,500. In accordance with the provisions of Act 106, I'm recommending that the County Board of Commissioners grant approval for the county to continue to post a blanket public official's bond with limits of $2 million, posted with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania effective January 1, 2019, for calendar year 2019. Are there any questions?
Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Jones? Okay. I'd like to make a motion authorizing counties to obtain a blanket bonds or crime insurance to satisfy public official bonding requirements. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings? Yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thank you, Rick. 18-0258?
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a resolution entering into a renewal agreement with Westlaw. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a renewal agreement with Westlaw for the next three years at $15,110 a month for the Lackawanna County Court of Common Pleas. And here to address the Board is Frank Castellani, our Court Administrator. Frank?
Good morning, Frank. Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, one of the Court's obligations is to provide access to legal research to the offices that service the Court, primarily the judges and their staff. For many years, we have engaged the services of Thomson Reuters through their Westlaw. This is a renewal contract for a period of three years. It covers all of the judges, their law clerks, the public defender's office, and the county solicitor's office. We combined all of those, obviously, to make it more financially feasible for the county. This, of course, is a budgeted item that we do every year. So, we respectfully request that you enter into this agreement, so we can continue this service for another three years.
Okay. Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Castellani?
I have research.
Okay, I'd like to enter into a renewal agreement with Westlaw. Do I have a second?
Second.
18-0259.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution awarding an arts and culture mini-grant. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby award an arts and culture mini-grant to the following community organizations. $500 to Clark's Green Borough for a holiday tree lighting ceremony, and $500 to the Springbrook Township for an afternoon with, an event with Santa. And here to address the Board is Maureen McGuigan, our Director of Arts and Culture. Maureen?
Well, as we wrap up 2018, these are our rolling $500 mini-grants. And as you can see, it's very holiday-oriented. So we're happy to fund these two communities so that they can have some holiday activities for their residents.
Does the Board have, does the Board have any questions for Ms. McGuigan? I would just like to, and I'm sure that the Board will chime in after I start this, I'd like to thank you for the holiday market. It was a, it was a great, great success. And your department, you know, spearheaded it, yourself and Chris Calvi. And I know we have a lot of other partners in it, our maintenance and everybody else. But I'd like to personally thank you, and it was such a successful event. And I can't believe how many people are thrilled and they can't wait for it to come back next year.
Yeah, it was so nice to hear Tegan Cooney's comments.
Yes.
That's what we do it for, for the vendors, the community, and Lackawanna County. So I appreciate the comments.
It builds up those small businesses.
Yeah.
It really does.
Yeah, we were happy with it. We weren't sure how it was going to work out, but yeah, it had that kind of crisp Kindle mark, we keep saying, outdoor winter festival feel, and it was very cozy, and everyone seemed to have a good time.
It had that warm Christmas feeling to it, it really did.
That's well said, yes.
Very, very nice. Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you very much for all the work, and the tent was great. I liked that. It was really, it was really nice. I liked that. And I spent way too much money and...
I've heard that a lot.
That I wasn't supposed to.
That's a good thing.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Oteriani?
You did a great job, Maureen, and keep up the good work, you and Chris.
Appreciate that. And I do want to say, we didn't do it alone.
I know, there's a lot of, a lot of partners here.
We have so many departments, everything from the Controller's Office to maintenance, to community partners. So I do want to give a shout out to all the people that helped us.
Mike Meltzer, everybody else, we'd really, it was great.
Yeah, exactly. There's probably, I'd be up here, I know this along me.
If you could talk to them.
Exactly, but I do want to thank everybody.
It was, because the transition was from being inside the Globe to bringing Wyoming Avenue literally alive with a tent that was a block long. So it was, it was really great.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
I'd like to make a motion awarding the arts and culture mini-grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 18-0260.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution accepting the quote from Cronos Incorporated. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby accept the quote from Cronos Incorporated for support services for the county's time and attendance system for the period from January 24 through 2019 through February 23, 2020, at a cost of $29,242.90. Here to address the Board is Tom Durkin, our CFO. Tom?
Good morning again, Tom.
Good morning again, Commissioners. This is just the annual maintenance agreement, a software and hardware maintenance agreement that we enter into every year with Cronos Corp., so that they'll help us maintain our time and attendance system from a software point of view and hardware point of view, including clocks. If a clock goes down, per the terms of this maintenance agreement, if we have a clock go down, we have an agreement with Cronos that we'll send out the clock that day, and within 24 hours, they'll have a replacement clock here for it. So again, it's just an annual maintenance agreement. It went up from last year to this year by about 3%. And as the chief said, it's about $29,000 that we're looking for.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Isn't our budget for net, this is budgeted, all right?
It is budgeted, Commissioner, yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion accepting the quote for the Cronos Inc. Do I have a second? Second. Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. Thanks, Tom. 18-0261.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a resolution approving an agreement for the Office of Drug and Alcohol. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the provider agreement with Endless Mountain Extended Care for the Department of Human Services, Lackawanna County Susquehanna's Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019, as attached here to. And here to address the Board is Barbara Durkin. Barbara?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Barb.
Happy holidays. I'm here to request your support of a provider contract between my office and obviously the Board of Commissioners and the Endless Mountain Extended Care Facility, which is a halfway house, a male halfway house that is located in Wyoming County. There is currently a need for the service. They've already started, they're up and running, they have a really great facility, and we would love to be able to send our residents, not only of Lackawanna County, but also of Susquehanna County, to their program. Budget neutral, we have the, the resources to cover whatever the cost would be, and the rate is pretty minimal at this point. So I'm just requesting your support of this contract. Any questions?
The Board have any questions? Okay. I'd like to make a motion approving a grant for Office of Drug and Alcohol. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Barb.
Thank you so much. Just a, just a word of thanks to Barb for all your work this year in regards to drug and alcohol. Tremendous job. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate the smorg, the support of the Commissioners as well. It's been a really, it's, it's been a challenging year for, for all of us, I think, within, within the county in terms of the opioid crisis, but the, the support of you all has been great. So I look forward to continuing that in the new year.
We're here, we're here for you.
Thank you so much for your work. Yeah, so they're bringing another drug into the area, just, just as you saw in the news today. So here we go. You know, they're supposed to be sober.
Absolutely.
It's ridiculous. Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
18-0262.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a resolution approving a contract on behalf of Luzerne County and Lackawanna County with Barry Islett and Associates. Whereas Lackawanna County and on behalf of Luzerne County applied for and received funding through the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development and the Conservation of Natural Resources to conduct a bicycle and pedestrian study in Scranton and Wilkes-Barre. And whereas Luzerne County has agreed to partner with Lackawanna County in undertaking the study with Lackawanna County as the lead. And whereas the steering committee for this study interviewed three firms to undertake the study and selected Barry Islett and Associates to complete the study, and Barry Islett and Associates agreed to complete the study at a cost not to exceed $149,995. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve a contract between the county of Lackawanna and on behalf of Luzerne County with Barry Islett and Associates in an amount not to exceed $149,995, as attached here to. Here to address the Board is George Kelly, our Director of Economic and Community Development. George?
Good morning, Commissioners. There's two grants here. One is D.C.N.R., Department of Conservation Natural Resources for $75,000, and then Keystone Communities Fund, D.C.D. grant for $54,400. In addition to the grants that have been awarded to us, the county did have to put in a match of $11,250. Luzerne County matched that amount, too. Scranton, the city of Scranton, put in $500, and the Anthracite Bicycle Coalition put in $100 to do, for the cash match for this. The grants plus the match covers the cost of the contract, and there'll be a study, detailed study concerning bike lanes, walkability, downtown Scranton, and downtown Wilkes-Barre.
Okay, does the Board have any questions for George?
I do. I was reading through the, the application, and it's, I mean, some of the items that they're doing, George, could you explain what they're actually doing and what they're getting paid to do?
I'll be glad to do that. What I did was I brought the, our senior transportation planning manager, Steve Pettoniak, who's also run the day-to-day of our planning commission for the last 30-plus years, in case you had detailed questions. So Steve, come on up.
Good morning, Steve.
The basic point of this study is to take a look at alternative modes of transportation through the downtown areas of both Wilkes-Barre and Scranton to connect various points of interest. For instance, Naok Park to the Heritage Trail, and Wilkes-Barre, the Endless Mountains Trail to the Kirby Park area, to look at various modes, pedestrian, walking, and bicycling. We will look at, or the consultants will be looking at the road patterns and road networks to see where there might be any hazards or any impediments to developing a safe network. The impetus for this came through PennDOT, D.C.N.R., and D.C.E.D. Just some background, the county planning commission about five years ago partnered with the Pennsylvania Environmental Council to create a bicycle network map for the northeast area of the Commonwealth. We also did a earlier bike study about 15 years ago, so this will be an update to that. One of the things, one of the reasons D.C.N.R. is funding this is, two years ago, D.C.N.R. did a statewide survey, and they found that the public is really clamoring for urban parks and urban trail systems and trail networks. So D.C.N.R. was one of the, or one of the agencies that was really pushing for this, and PennDOT, through their multimodal transportation planning, is also looking at it. The entire multimodal transportation system began back in 1981 during the Reagan administration, when federal highway administration passed what was called then ICE-T, the Inner Surface Transportation Efficiency Act. Every transportation act, which is updated about every six years, requires that multimodal transportation planning be implemented.
So it's not then a study, it's actually implementation, you're planning on implementation?
With the results of the study, we will be able to go to PennDOT when they're updating the Transportation Improvement Program and long-range plans to get any projects that come out of this study funded through PennDOT, through their multimodal directorate.
So again, is it a study or is it a plan to implement?
This is a study right now to determine where we should put bike, bike networks. From that, we'll see what projects need to be done, and those projects will then be entered into the Transportation Improvement Program for construction.
Because we didn't vote, I mean, we didn't vote on an implementation, we voted for a study to be provided. And I have our ordinance, our original ordinance, so I'm not sure if this is an implementation of...
It's a study to determine what projects may be needed, and then those projects will be voted on through the Metropolitan Planning Organization, Lackawanna-Luzerne Transportation Study.
Okay, so is it a study to actually implement the bike lanes, and what exactly do they want to do? Because that's a completely different thing to vote on, as far as I can tell.
It's a study to determine what the impediments might be, or what the improvements would need to be to implement bike lanes.
Right.
Those bike lanes would not be funded through this.
It's not what we voted on, Commissioners. We voted on a study to see if it was plausible. We didn't vote on something to say, yes, this is something we're going to do, and this study's going to show us how to do it. That is not what we voted on, and I have the ordinances here. So I'm, we'd have to change that whole entire vote, I think.
Now, Steve, we're not actually putting bike lanes in, we're not strapping lines, we're not implementing, which I think is your interpretation, we're not going to build the bike lanes as part of this.
No, you're, you're planning on the implementation of it, though. That's not what we voted on. We voted on a study to decide if it was feasible to implement something like this, not the implementation planning process. There's, there's five ways to go about starting a project, and, you know, your initial phase would be to see if a study could be even feasible to do this. That's what it was voted on. I mean, my fellow Commissioners voted for it, so, I mean, I did not, because I knew that this was going to be the actual result, because it's not a feasibility study, apparently. It's an implementation study. How would we implement this in these both areas? It's not, is it possible to implement this in these two areas? There's a difference. So, you know, I think it was something that, you know, I mean, it generated a lot of articles, many, many articles. And, you know, I would love to see the study of people who actually wanted this to occur, because if you can explain to us both that go to the MPO meetings, what is our graph for importance of projects to be started? So I know that, I had discussed this with you, George, on how intermodal is more important than actual roadways at this point in our, in that planning commission. So why is that this is more important than fixing our roadways?
Commissioner, there are multiple different funding streams at PennDOT.
Right.
And federal highways. Multimodal transportation planning has its own funding stream.
Right.
Funds for studying, implementing, constructing multimodal projects such as bike lanes or trail systems has its own pot of money. That money cannot be used to fix bridges, to fix roadways. Bridges and roadways have their own funding sources.
I understand that. My question is, is why is it that that's being put ahead of that? I mean, you sit on the planning commission, both of you, right? So I'm just asking a question. Can you explain to the public why these studies and bicycle lanes are on a graph that's a pyramid with roads being at the point at the bottom and everything else being more important to start?
We want to talk about priorities, let's talk about something we can control. If roads and bridges are a priority, why do we wipe out the infrastructure budget of Lackawanna County for next year and last year? There's funding available for this, there is a need for it, as identified by our MPO, by PennDOT, by the federal government, who says we must have these type of plans, alternative cut...
I understand that.
We're fulfilling our mission to do that.
So you're just going by the plan from the federal government? Because this is our plan, this is Pennsylvania's plan?
Our plan is to commit $11,250 of general fund money to be the match, to bring in benefits to the population here in Lackawanna County. We're going to look to explore, how can we effectively put in bike lanes? How can we give access to those who don't have cars, to services, to our government center? Let's take a bike there if you don't have a car. Take transportation. It's part of what we do in transportation planning, it's an integral part.
I know, I saw your plan, I read the plan, and I'm asking questions, because I made that a point to make sure I went over and I read the plan. And I'm asking you, as two people that sit on that and are involved in that on a daily basis, apparently, to explain to the public the information that I found and why it is that we're putting bicycle lanes and bike studies and implementation of those ahead of roads and bridges. I, it's just questions, it's, it's, you know, I've been questioned on it by the public because I sent them to that website to read what you showed me to read, George. And, you know, it's not an attack on you or Mr. Pettoniak, it's a question. And it's a valid question by the public and myself, because we spend a lot of money on gas tax here, and our roads and bridges are a disaster, as we all know. And here we are, looking at putting bike lanes in, and it's not just a study anymore, it's an actual, how are we going to implement it? The study seems to have already occurred, somebody decided we already need it. So now we're going to provide implementation plans to whomever we're providing this to. It's, it's a done deal, am I correct?
The done deal is the plan in the study that's voted on today to award the contract to outline what will it take to put the bike lanes here.
Correct. There's no negative, there's no negative points.
As well as walkability, as well as how do you make the downtown more accessible and safe? We don't want people to be unsafe. We don't want them to be driving down the middle of the street, get hit, hit by cars, the street, get hit, hit by cars, same way we have pedestrians, same challenge we have at safety crossings. We constantly are looking to say, how do we make the downtown a better place? How do we keep our residents safe?
I'm looking-
And that's the only way of doing it.
I am sorry to interrupt you, George, I really am, I apologize, but I am looking to make the county better, not downtown Scranton. I'm looking at making the county better. And that's where our tax dollars are supposed to be going and that is not an attack on you, I'm just making a statement, okay? The simple fact of the matter is, is that we are spending money from county, state and federal money that comes from our paychecks to pay for these projects, from our gas tax. All this money that goes, that is government money is our money. The people pay into certain taxes to pay for this stuff. When we pay for a gas tax, we expect it to be utilized for our roads and bridges. What funding, where is the funding coming from for this grant?
Two sources of funding, Department of Conservation, Natural Resources, that's looking to improve recreation, natural resources such as biking, being able to do exercise, healthy living. Keystone Fund, there's a Keystone Fund that the balance of the money is coming out, which is the Keystone Recreation Park and Conservation Fund. Fund that was set up by our legislators, by the state of Pennsylvania to do more recreation and conservation. In addition to recreation and conservation, it is an alternative form of transportation which we have to look into-
But that's, I, I'm glad you brought that up, could you repeat that please and, and I can hardly hear you, so if you could repeat that into the mic.
Sure, we have Keystone Recreation Park and Conservation Fund, but in addition to looking at recreation and conservation, we are looking, providing accessible transportation. We're looking at finding alternative transportation for those who don't drive or may not have access to trans-, to, to our cold system.
Right, and, and that brings me to the point of what I read in the, in this, in this planning commission that you all sit on, is that you're, and it's not my words, it's the plan's words, that they are trying to make sure that they find alternate modes of transportation and that also is environmental in its, in its thoughts and process that they're working on. So, is that correct?
Yes.
So it is correct that it's also environmental and they're worried about cutting down on gas, carbon emissions through gas and automobiles that are on our roads?
That would be a sensible conclusion.
Well, no, I'm asking you if that's in there, because I read it in there, so I just want to make sure that you're confirming it's in the study because I don't want this grant time saying, oh, well Commissioner Cummings wants to take all the cars off the roads, because, that's not coming from my mouth, that's coming from these studies, that they are looking at environmental problems as well.
Yes, they are concerned with the environment.
Thank you, thank you. So to the public, I urge you to go to the planning commission's site and read this plan, because you know what's last on the list to fix is our roads and bridges. All the funding is being targeted for other areas besides roads and bridges and you wonder why the people get so upset when they see funding going to areas like a bike study that isn't really a bike study, it's an implementation study. How are we going to implement this? And I think that, you know, we've had all these articles about, it's a study, it's a study, when in fact it's not a study, it's how are we going to implement the program? And some of the items that they're getting paid for is to look online to see Wiki Maps and, I, I mean, I would, I, I, we're going to have this on our website, right, for the public to see?
Yeah.
I would urge you to go and read this because it's not as difficult or hard to understand as people might think and it's well worth, worth the time to finally realize how some of our money is just being completely wasted on projects that we don't need. Wyoming Avenue where we're putting our building, if they want to decide to make what, the sidewalk smaller so they can make another bike lane, so they're going to take a sidewalk, a half of a sidewalk away so they can make a bike lane to make it safe? When you were safe walking on the sidewalk to begin with and weren't going to have the problem walking down the sidewalk, a car wasn't going to hit you. I don't understand, you know, I guess we have to make the bicyclist safe. You know, it's, to me, it's, it's, it's just such a waste of taxpayer money and it's just infuriating that we would take money that could be utilized elsewhere and, you know, when Parks and Rec are getting involved, they transition over to environmental from Parks and Rec. Of course, people are going to say, oh, well, in a park, yeah, we want a trail, we want a, a place to ride a bike. But then you, you, you hear, oh, but they're also looking at this Keystone Park and Rec's funding is also going to do, you know, to transition over to bike safety on the roads. How does even one, it's apples and oranges, it shouldn't even be happening. Parks and Rec should be Parks and Rec, it shouldn't have anything to do with the roadways. It, it's just how they, you know, trick you into getting that funding, that's the way I see it. Using Park and Rec money for funding to, this is, for roads is crazy, for bicycle lanes.
Does the board have any other questions? Okay, I'd like to just say that, you know, we do share the road with bikes and, I mean, a lot of cities have bike lanes, you know, and this is something that-
They don't, Washington.
There's a lot of cities that do have it.
And New York, where they get killed.
Our city, you know-
Every day.
Is, I think, is on the upswing, we have a lot of people living in the downtown area, we have a park that's probably going to be built that's going to be over towards the, over towards the Trolley Museum, you know, a lot of people like to exercise and they won't be able to ride the sidewalks, so they, you know, I mean, they're out there now, they're out there and they're basically going under the same rules as cars down there, but there's no space for them. And if there's an opportunity for us to put a four-foot spot out there for somebody to use their bicycle, I mean, I've seen it all over the place.
Commissioner, this plan is not just about biking, this, this is a plan, they put the racks on the buses because they're trying to get people to use the buses to go to work. So they want them to get on, in front of their house on a bus, put their bike on the front of the bus to go to wherever they have to, to go to at the intermodal center and then ride their bike to work from there. That's the plan, that's what's in this plan. It's to get people out of their cars and it's environmental as well. And it's not my study, it's not me saying this, this is the actual studies that are happening with our money, our taxpayer dollars.
The bike racks, the way they're set up is a lot of people just don't have the opportunity or the finances to actually-
Buy a car.
-afford a car, they can't afford a car.
They use that as an excuse.
So they use, they use a rack, brings them into downtown Scranton, no bus takes you directly to where you work.
Right.
It just doesn't. So you get your bike, get off the rack, you get to your, wherever you're at within ten to fifteen minutes or less. So a person from Carbondale can't go to work down in Washington Avenue over in Southside, if, I mean, they get dropped off at downtown Scranton, they get on their bike and they're at work within minutes. There's a lot of people, and I know a lot of people, they use their bikes, they just do.
An example is TMG where you have to walk a mile to go to work. Take a bus from anywhere in the county, you have to walk a mile to get to TMG and there's eight hundred people that work there. One of the challenges we have with our workforce is getting people to be able to get there for work and where face those challenges, so those without cars, this may help.
And, and that would be the companies, you know, I mean, I know that we have people that work up in, up in the Poconos and what, they bring a bus down here, they have a parking lot where they park their car and they bring the bus down to pick them up, so, you know, I mean, this bicycle thing is not for the taxpayers to pay to get people to go to work. That's not the taxpayer's job is to get people to go to work, sorry. That's the person and the company's job and, and really, that's not even the reason that, that they're using in these planning meetings, the reason they're using it is because they want lower emissions. So it has, really, they're just using that to try and make it a positive effort so that the taxpayer supports it. And that's why I'm saying, you know, it's, they're very creative in how they come up with reasons for wanting Keystone Park and Rec Fund to be used for a bike project on the roadways, very creative. I applaud their efforts, but I read all these things, I don't just guess at why they're doing it. And I encourage the public, please read some of the planning commission's information because you'll be appalled when you do. You know, it has, you know, it's just, please read it. Don't, don't take my word for it, don't ever listen to politicians because, you know, they're not reliable. Read it for yourself and you'll find out the actual facts that are happening in, in some of this craziness that goes on in, in government, thank you.
Okay, does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion approving the contract on behalf of Lazarene and Barry Essett and Associates, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani, Commissioner Cummings-
No.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Eighteen dash zero two six three.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, George.
Are you going to read each of those into a duly?
No, I'm just going to read the cover one, Commissioner, yeah.
That was a sneeze, God bless you.
Resolution oh two six three, entering into a transportation memorandum of understanding, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a transportation memorandum of understanding with fourteen schools on behalf of the Department of Human Services to ensure educational stability of foster care youth as per the Every Student Succeeds Act requires. The schools are as follows, Ablington Heights, Carbondale, Dunmore, Fell Charter, Forest City, Howard Gardner, Lackawanna Trail, Lakeland, Mid Valley, North Pocono, Old Forge, Riverside, Scranton and Valleyville School Districts. Here to address the board is Bill Browning, our Director of Office and Family Services. Bill?
Morning Commissioners, I think it's still morning. We, uh, this is, allows us to share, well, it doesn't allow us, we're mandated to share costs with school districts for transportation for, for kids that are in foster care unless there's a determination that in their best interest that we don't transport them to their home school district. For instance, if, if transporting them would be like a three-hour commute, then obviously it would be in the best interest of the child, but absent that, we are required to, to share transportation costs.
Okay, does the board have any questions for Mr. Browning?
I think it's, I think it's a good service, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion entering into a transportation memorandum of understanding agreement, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani-
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings-
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes. Bill, would you like to stand up there for one second?
Yeah, actually, um, I had asked Bill if I could read an email that he had sent to us, um, and it was funny because I left the podium to go down and ask for his permission to read his email and then Commissioner O'Malley hands me an email and he, he's like, I'm going to read this, I was like, oh, I already asked him, I said, I'm reading it. And he's like, he's like, go ahead, read it, he's, he's a nice guy. So he's, he's giving me the, the, what he was going to do.
This was a great day, Monday, Monday the seventeenth, Monday the seventeenth was a culmination of all the work-
Yes.
-from April of two thousand sixteen forward to get to a point where we were opening the Globe Store. And the third and fourth floor, which is Children, Youth Services, Area Aging, SLHDA and Domestic Relations moved in and we had an opportunity to actually greet-
Alcohol and mental health too.
Yep, yep, and we had an opportunity to greet everyone as they walked through the door to their new offices.
Yeah.
And, you know, some are smiling, some were unsure, some were, some were, it was, it was good, it was very good. And it's a start and every weekend we're going to be moving another floor and so it's going to be great going on till at least January fifteenth, so we've got a lot more moving going on, but we'd like to personally thank you for the letter because it really mattered because-
It did have it.
It did matter.
It did have it. So, so anyway, I, um, you know, I, I get very, and I'm very vocal about when I get very upset with some of the stuff going on and, um, you know, I was surprised that Commissioner O'Malley was going to read this email and I want to personally thank you for taking the time to do this because, um, there's been a lot of negativity and, um, you're running your department and you're seeing what's happening, we were there, we saw how happy everybody was, but you just made us recognize the fact and you got the feedback. So I'd like to, with your permission, read an email that was sent to us by William Browning, our Executive Director of Lackawanna County Department of Human Services. Dear Commissioners, thank you for supporting our workforce in obtaining an excellent, safe and professional workspace. The comments from staff and morale are extremely positive. In spite of the pre-move drama spawned by residual distrust between management and the union, the move has been an, an unqualified success. The goodwill generated by the impressive new setting has already overshadowed the brief negativity generated by suspicion and fear. I look forward to a highly productive new year. Thank you again and Merry Christmas. Bill, William J. Browning, Executive Director, Lackawanna County Department of Human Services. You know, when things like this go on in the media, we always take it as a personal affront to the commissioners. But this is our employees that, that are being affected. And, you know, I'm used to the jabs and the commentary made in the newspaper, the local newspaper and some of the online nastiness that goes on for the first female commissioner I am. And, and that's, that's what I have to deal with and put up with. But when we're talking about our employees and our directors that have worked extremely hard to make sure that this was a positive and coordinated effort and our, our, our team that actually moved us, CADM movers did an excellent job. And, you know, all of our staff that helped with the move, I, I can't even begin to explain all the people that have been involved in, in our moves, every department, I believe. And, and, you know, our employees handled it with, with dignity and grace and they had to deal with public commentary that was unnecessary and, um, quite frankly, it's infuriating that somebody would just try and throw that kind of a wedge into a perfectly happy and excited day where people are actually getting a new environment to work in, more space to work in. Everybody was thrilled and I can't wait until everybody else gets to the opportunity to move in and see it. And, um, you know, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for that letter and I wanted to bring it to the public to let them know that, you know, when all this negativity happens, it doesn't just affect the commissioners. It could quite possibly affect the morale of our employees and, and we have good employees. And, you know, I am sorry that that happened, but I'm thrilled that your department kind of thumbed back and said, you know, we're happy and we're, we're thrilled with what happened and I'm, I'm grateful for your email to let us know. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, and I think, and again, I don't think the stuff that happened was in bad faith, I think it's just longstanding, like I said in my letter, distrust between management, unions, et cetera, that it was almost too good to be true. And I think once they're, they're there, again, I don't hold any malice for someone having opinions and concerns, I think they've always, probably what a lot of their members have were concerned, like, this is almost too good to be true. They're there, they're happy, I mean, it's, it's an absolutely beautiful place and even people are commenting on the productivity has just risen in that brief, brief few days. So thank you.
It was a great first day, great first day.
Great first day, thank you for your work, thank you, Bill.
Thanks. I'd like to make a motion entering into the agriculture and conservation easements. Can we bring in Mr. Eric Johnson?
Thank you, Commissioner. Sorry.
Good afternoon Commissioners.
This is ordinance-
I also have Jerry Stiles with me, District Manager, sorry.
Resolution number two sixty-four is a resolution entering into agricultural conservation easements. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into an agreement acting through the County Agricultural Land Preservation Board for the sale and purchase of an agricultural conservation easement for one hundred and forty-five point eight five acre agricultural conservation easement for David Columbo Farm, Benton Township, Lackawanna County, a seventy-four point five nine acre agricultural conservation easement on the Albert M. Joseph L. and Donna M. Heyjoss Farm in Benton Township, Lackawanna County, and a forty-one point six two acre agricultural conservation easement on the Jonathan and Kelly B. McCoy Farm, Benton Township, Lackawanna County. And here to address the board is Eric Johnson with the Farmland Preservation Program Administrator. Eric, thank you.
Thank you, Don, sorry to interrupt you there to start. I also have Jerry Stiles here with me, the Conservation District Manager. Like Don said, we have three farms that we're bringing forward today to the Commissioners to have approved through our agricultural land conservation program, the Columbo Farm, the Heyjoss Farm and the McCoy Farm, all three of which are in Benton Township of Lackawanna County. All three farms are using existing state funding, the program, as you're familiar, administers both state and county financial resources, all three of these are going to be purchased under existing state funding that we have through the program. Just to echo what the solicitor said, the Columbo Farm is in total one forty-five point eight five acres in Benton Township for a total purchase price of three hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. The Heyjoss Farm, also in Benton Township, of seventy-four point five nine acres, total purchase price of one hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. And the McCoy Farm, of forty-one point six two acres in Benton Township for a total purchase price of one hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars, all of which, like I said, are state funds that are being administered through the Lackawanna County program. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, I'd like to hear them now.
Eric, why do we, could you just explain to the public why we do this?
Yeah, the importance of this program, there's many benefits of it to Lackawanna County, to really society in general. The biggest one is protecting farms from development so that these farms could be able to produce food for an ever-growing population, not only here in Lackawanna County, but state of Pennsylvania and in this country, quite frankly. Once these farms are lost to development pressure, which happens each and every day, we don't get them back. So by purchasing these perpetual conservation easements on these farms, not only are we contributing to the economic viability of that operation because they're getting some capital out of it, but we're making sure that that property in Lackawanna County is protected forever and one day, as we like to say it, from the pressures of development, that it could stay in farming and stay productive for residents here in the county.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions? I'd like to make a motion entering into an agriculture and conservation easement, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Yes.
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 Thank you.
Eighteen dash zero two six five.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is a resolution approving the District Attorney's memorandum of agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the memorandum of agreement between the District Attorney's Office and the Scranton Housing Authority for services of an Assistant District Attorney for two thousand nineteen. And here to address the board is the District Attorney, Mark Powell, Mark?
Good afternoon, we're requesting a one-year extension from January first, two thousand nineteen through December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. This position is funded one hundred percent by the Scranton Housing Authority for the safety and protection of its residents.
Does the board have any questions for our District Attorney? Thanks for coming in, Mark. I'd like to make a motion approving the District Attorney's memorandum of agreement, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Oteriani-
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings-
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Eighteen dash zero two six six.
Thank you, Commissioner, this is a resolution for appointments to the Solid Waste Authority, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Solid Waste Authority. Manuel Griffin, Chestnut Street in Archibald, a five-year term to begin immediately and to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. And Al Senafonte of Drinker Street in Dunmore, a five-year term to begin immediately and to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Rich Miller, Moscow, a five-year term to begin immediately, to, set to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. And Al Lawrence of Center Street in Dunmore, a five-year term to begin immediately and to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And further be resolved, the Board of Commissioners does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Solid Waste Authority, Dave Johns, Billan Village in Music, to a five-year term to begin immediately, set to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. a five-year term to begin immediately, set to expire on December 31st, 2022. We were contacted by the Executive Director of the Solid Waste Authority. The first four individuals that we are reappointing, all of their terms had expired, and they've been expired since 2016. So he's asked that they all be reappointed to reconstitute the Board, make them legal. Additionally, he had requested that somebody from our Engineers' Office be placed on the Board. So Dave Johns, who lives in Lackawanna County, was, we're requesting that he be appointed to, to the Board, from our Engineers' Office, Greenman Peterson.
Okay. It's good we have one of our engineers on the Board. Does the Board have any questions? Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the appointments to the Solid Waste Authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Okay, opportunity for the public to address the Board and...
Bob Bowles.
I'm the only one left, Bob.
I guess I got away, right?
Either move or proceed, please, or we gotta move on.
Bob Bowles, Scranton. It was nice seeing the past, the present, and the future. And I've been involved with all of it for over the years. And the development we've had over the years, good, bad, and indifferent. It's disappointing, though, that some people get into an office that they just have no business being in. And we just went through, we had our, one of our major auctions last Friday. It was very successful on one of our corporations that I'm dissolving here in the area. And we're continuing with it. We have other things planned. But it was brought on by Kolodziewski and Joe Joyce, much to the objection of the commissioners about putting judgments on real estate against an individual filing a tax lien, which they did. I'm the one who funds all these corporations, and by impeding me, where I was forced to file a Chapter 13 to protect the real estate that's still in litigation because of some people on a jury, and they know who they are, 10 of the 12, I would say, were the most incompetent individuals who had no understanding of really what goes on. This is a property that I paid taxes on in a global settlement many years ago, paid over $90,000. It was claimed to have been put in a bankruptcy, which was proven to be false. It was continued by Kolodziewski that it was never in a bankruptcy. It was never even in my name. At the time all this took place, it was actually in my children's name. And it went on and on and on, where he kept claiming that the taxes were never paid. We proved to him, we went before a jury, showed a jury.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Exactly what went on and how this all took place. But in their incompetence, two of the jurors, and they're made statements, which I got from the other jurors, that I'm a smart businessman, I should have put it in writing. It was signed by Judge Corbett. It was a global settlement. The county got all the money from the eminent domain of taking our properties. The other one said, well, we gotta pay taxes, so should he. Those were not questions given by the judge. It was a simple deal, was there a deal or no deal? But they had no understanding of what a deal is, and who was what, and where. Well, they went against us. And right after that, Kolodziewski and Joyce went, put a personal judgment on me individually against the properties, and then tried to force it into a judicial sale. The only opportunity we had for justice in this county was to file a Chapter 13 bankruptcy, which later on, the judge ruled, they should have never filed on me individually. Taxes go with the real estate. And they didn't abide by the commissioner's ruling that you can't do what you were doing. Yet Joe Joyce is still a solicitor. Joe Joyce is now the tax collector, wearing both hats, which is a major conflict of interest in this county. I could continue to battle, which we will, that's why we're in the courts, and we're going to suffice. There's no question, one way or the other. But it's put the county in such a tremendous liability for the damages created by these two. And it's not a threatening action, it's not that. It's one of disappointment that this even took place. And they were allowed to get away with what they did. I will continue what I'm doing, and it was with a lot of emotion to see a lot of equipment that in 57 years, we developed and built in this community. And the millions of dollars that I personally paid and employees and everything else, not only in this county, but other ones, to get to a point where you say enough's enough, and you move on, and you move in other areas, which we've done. But this is still my home. And it'll always be my home, no matter who they have. And the disappointment that I had to read was from the incompetent editorial staff at the Scranton Times. And they could take me on anytime they want. I look forward to it. They've taken everybody else on with their negativity, rather than understanding what positive growth is, because they've had their way for a long, long time. Well, on December 6th, they wrote an editorial, their opinion, Bowles has it backwards. Local voters have rejected Bob Bowles each time he has saw public office. What did that have to do with anything going on with my auctions?
Nothing.
I wasn't rejected by the people. I was rejected by the Scranton Times. But I had a felony charge from a case that went on here, didn't allow me to take the seat. Not what the people wanted. The people had someone like me in office in Scranton. Scranton would be where it is today, I can assure you of that. But that's where this paper got it wrong. Where I'm vetting when he blames Scranton Lackawanna County politics for an impending bankruptcy. No, they are blamed. If Kolodziewski didn't do what he did, there wouldn't have been a bankruptcy. It would have just went simply through the courts, took the legal system, and whatever it came out to ultimately down the end is where the judicial decision would have been. So it had nothing to do with my past politics, other than jealousy, vendetta because of my political stance for the President of the United States and what we've done. Where it continues, he should thank politics and incompetent Lackawanna County governance for his ability to receive the proceeds of several potential property sales, rather than having to turn over a large chunk of the money to cover longstanding property tax delinquency. Taxes was never in a delinquency, it was never an issue, it's still in litigation. Has nothing to do with the backward incompetent Lackawanna County. The incompetence was Kolodziewski and Joe Joyce. And this is a personal attack on you commissioners, which I object strongly against, because you put them in their place, they went against your orders. A jury decided in May, and this is what I decided about the jury not understanding what an agreement really means and have any conceptual idea. They were only there to decide a deal, not whether I owe taxes, or I'm a smart business guy and should have had it in writing, disputing that a Lackawanna County judge signed this global settlement. So another part of their incompetence. It went on to the Tax Claim Bureau where I paid them and all that. But the county claimed that the Sanderson Street property was not included in the early settlement, and the jury agreed because they had no understanding of what the hell was going on. And that's sad. And I hate to pick on citizens in this area, some of yous are pretty damn stupid, because you don't know what the business world is. And look in the mirror and understand how incompetent you really are, and then look back, what have you given this county and the people in this area by developing a business and going through everything that takes place, where you become accountable to your employees, to your government, and everything else. Now I intend to send, sell five properties, this is the best part, two of them in Lackawanna County, other, under state law, the county could seize the proceeds of those other property sales to cover the claim and the delinquency on the true property. But Commissioners, Patrick O'Malley and Lorene Cummins declined to authorize such a program in 2017, even when they were pressed by the Tax Claim Bureau to do it. You stopped two Gestapos from destroying people's lives. And that's what they don't understand. You stood up for what you're here for, and that's for the people in this community, for fairness and justice and credibility. Legislators wanted to preclude developers, real estate speculators, and other large landowners from keeping the proceeds from some properties while delinquent on others. Every issue has an issue. Everything has a cause and a causation. They're all individual. They're not just, let's take it from here to deal with the problem over here because we could get away with it, being dictators and uncontrollable individuals in a tax claim bureau, where they have this amazed power of dictatorship. Yet Cummings reacted to the proposal if the Tax Claim Bureau launched an attack on hard-pressed widows and orphans who have trouble paying their property tax bills. At some point, the true property will go on the county tax sale list unless the back taxes are paid, if no one buys it, which is likely because the site has environmental issues, which they have no clue about, this is an assumption on their part, that would have to be resolved, it would become the county government's problem. And if even that were the case, and it wasn't environmental property, you're talking into millions of dollars for no reason at all, no justification, only because egos wanted to suppress what really the judicial system and what we have laws in this county for. The commissioner's failure to use the tools provided by state law to collect on major tax delinquency is inexcusable. Bowles rather than all county taxpayers who paid taxes on time, including hard-pressed workers and older people whom Cummings claimed the champion is among a handful of beneficiaries. Well, my comment to the Scranton Times is get your act straight. You moved out of the city of Scranton, you moved into other areas. You didn't stay in our area with your plant to pay taxes in this city. You abandoned the city, you abandoned the people. You made issues during my campaign, as negative as you could be, but to attack our commissioners, who are standing up for the rights of people, including myself and other people, yes, orphans, widows, and others, who have financial difficulty because of the taxing from the idiots that run the Scranton School District and in the city of Scranton that have destroyed our infrastructure in this city, put the blame where the blame belongs. It's on incompetence. But don't pick on you two or Jerry for sitting in here and defending the rights of the people, especially businesses, that sometimes do face a hardship and do face a problem. And we in the business community know that, especially in the transportation. Fuel goes up, taxes are all over the place, you regulate it for this and for that. But we're the developers. We, the businesses, are worth the growth is. We're the ones who take the risk, and we're the ones who make the money for employees to go out so they could buy your stupid paper. And that's the difference. We're the ones that give you what you want. Every business, every little mom and pop store, that's where America grew from, not dictatorial people who got hand-me-downs and were able to make it because they were in the right party at the right time. I challenge them, anytime they want to take this on, and we'll finish, as far as this litigation goes, and we will be successful. Unfortunately, because Kolodziewski and Joyce were allowed to do what they did, not only to me, but to many other people in this county, that they went ahead and took advantage of, and some deserve it, and some don't. But when you have a dictator who dictates what he wants to do, held his own jury, so to speak, held his own hearing, as judge and jury, did it what he wanted to do, that's what's wrong with the system. We have laws, the laws are for everyone, including Kolodziewski and Joyce. And this isn't over, it's only the beginning. And I'm willing to hold a town hall meeting, so any of the idiots out there want to come and question my credibility and my integrity, be my guest. And yeah, I did send the county jail because of a judicial system that isn't fair, and it isn't just. But I was in Lackawanna County. And that's the reason we're where we are. But I still continue to flourish, I still continue to grow. And these idiots, and their incompetent writers, who don't know the real truth, and jurors, who should pay attention before you chastise somebody because you're jealous, or you're too damn lazy to go out and make it happen, look in the mirror before you question these commissioners about what's right, what's wrong, in a tax sale of your real estate that you worked your life for. And I applaud you commissioners for standing up and taking the stance, but take the step further and eliminate the problem in this county right now, and that's Joyce, who's done what he's done, and you put him in a position that he shouldn't be in. And that's my problem here, and I brought that up. And I came out here publicly to make the statement. I don't hide behind anybody, and I sure in hell don't run from them. But my companies will continue to grow. Unfortunately, they're going to be growing in other communities. And it's sad to do that. We've been employers in this county, family-wise and otherwise, for over 100 years. And we gave a lot back. What have they given us? And that's the problem. And I'll continue with the litigation. I may be in other areas, but I didn't leave this town. I'm still a resident of Scranton, Pennsylvania, Lackawanna County, and I still will continue to fight for the rights of the people in this community. Right, wrong, or indifferent to their opinions, we will suffice because we are the voice, we make the choices, and we'll make the changes. And one thing isn't going to change, this is my dinner, this is the 25th year I'm doing it on Christmas Day. It will continue, the Scranton Times can't stop that, neither could Kolodziewski, and neither will Joyce. This is my home, these are my people, this is my extended family, and they won't be without a Christmas dinner on Christmas Day. So that's where we're at, and that's who I am. And if they don't like it, too damn bad. And commissioners, I applaud you for what you're doing, keep up the good work, but make the proper changes. You need to do it because it's about the people. And unfortunately, I have to leave. I have other commitments to go on. I'm involved in several meetings today revolving some of my other deals. Wish you all a Merry Christmas, and thank you for the time.
Merry Christmas, Bob.
Bye-bye.
Good luck with the Christmas party. Okay, anyone else?
Okay, how are you guys?
Joe, just your name and address.
My name is Joe Harris. I am a resident of Scranton. I live 771 Newton Road in West Scranton. Lived here almost all of my life. I currently work for my father Tom's business. It's Roll Call. We're located on Kaiser Avenue. We moved here from Luzerne County about a year and a half ago. Everything is going really, really good, so I really thank the community for, for everybody's support.
Nice billboard.
You like the billboard? Thank you. Well, I'm here today because I'm in a different type of situation. Last time I attempted to do this, it really, it didn't work out too well on my behalf and caused a lot of turmoil with my department. I'm a retired 15-year veteran with the Scranton, well, was with the Scranton Police Department. I did recently retire to help out with the family business. Again, I am not the owner of the business, I am simply employed at this point. What I am respectfully requesting is that Roll Call be put on the sheriff deputy vouchers for this upcoming year. We are approved county vendors, we've been approved county vendors since 2009. Never had a problem with billing, never had a problem with lending credit to the county, waiting for payment, there was never been... waiting for payment, there was never been a problem whatsoever, and like I said, we've been approved in 2009. Ever since 2010, and it's important, and I understand many people were not in the room during this time, but to help better understand what's been going on and what my concern is, you know, right away, you might think, well, this should be easy. Yeah, okay, you want to do business, sure, do business, we'll go through the process. Unfortunately, for nine years, the process didn't work the way it should have. The goalpost was moved on Roll Call numerous times, and I think it's important that everybody understands the history here, to understand why I'm here and why, at this point, as far as the county's concerned, I don't have much to lose at this point, as far as county business goes. This starts back, and I'll try to make this super quick, guys, because I know it's been a long day, but I'm just going to bring you back to 2010. Everything that I say, I do have actual dates written down as 15 years, well, 17 now, as a law enforcement officer. Dates and times, who, what, when, where, and why is crucial. So there is not one thing that I'm about to say that I can't give you the date, the time, the who, what, when, where, and why. So this has been just recorded since 2010. Much of this stuff is with emails. So back to January 12th of 2010, it started with Reginald Mariani, who sent an email to Jim McLean, who was then the purchasing director. And then he CC'd Ken McDowell, who was then the county controller, indicating a recent audit from Star Uniform should be looked into. This is where it all started. So the first issue that the county had with Roll Call was on February 2nd of 2011, Controller McDowell emailed Jim McLean questioning the vouchers given to the deputies made out to Star Uniform only. So it was just, now, we're talking over $100,000. This is already allocated money, when I'm talking about the uniform, you know, bid, bid all you want, it doesn't save the county nothing. This is allocated money that was already pre-agreed upon through the collective bargaining agreement, so this money's already spent, it's the deputy's money. But they had to use their money, their vouchers, at one particular place. So this was the area of concern. So in 2000, okay, so a return email from Jim McLean said that the county does not have to bid because Star Uniform is a CoStar dealer. Those of you that don't know what CoStar is, is CoStar is a Pennsylvania online bid process. The government bids, and then the bids can be placed and accepted online. This, the idea behind CoStar, this gives the smaller agencies the ability to piggyback off the bids submitted by the larger agencies. So in 2011, it was brought to county officials' attention that none of the uniforms or equipment was ever placed out to bid via CoStar. But Roll Call at this point was not. So Roll Call registered as a CoStar supplier shortly after, in case any of these products should go out to bid via CoStar. No bid was ever presented via CoStar after Roll Call registered. So all this Roll Call talk, it just wasn't being used, and I'm not sure if people didn't understand how it actually did work, but it was not being used. After this, both at the time, Chief Deputy Minetti and McLean both said, you guys will be on the vouchers. All right, not a problem, you're on the vouchers, you're on the vouchers, you're on the vouchers. I could cite the exact date and time and who I was with when that was said to me, that we would in fact be on the vouchers. I was happy with that, obviously. I said, well, all right, awesome, thank you, we can move ahead. February 4th of 2012, all the deputies' vouchers were made out to Star Uniform only. And I got two hands up, there's not much we could do. So Chief Deputy Minetti said it wasn't him, McLean said it wasn't him, Jerry D. Pasquale, who was then part of the purchasing department, said, Joe, that doesn't, that just doesn't sound right. After I spoke at a commissioners' meeting, Commissioner O'Brien emailed Chief Minetti and said, basically, what the heck's going on? Were they supposed to be on these vouchers or not? And Chief Minetti said, no, this is you. The sheriff decides what equipment we buy, you decide where we get it from. And it was a lot of finger pointing, okay? So who's at fault, I'm not sure, but the second issue now was with the equipment named brand. So on February 7th, I spoke with a deputy, I'm not going to mention her name, but she's from the sheriff's department, and she said, it's because, quote-unquote, the name Blower, it's a named brand that Star Uniform supplies, is in the contract, so it's named brand. So like, it was always spec, but they were going by named brand. Blower's in the contract, therefore, we're not Blower vendors, so we had to, everybody had to use, you know, Star for his blower. February 8th, 2012, the last time I was here speaking at this meeting. I spoke at the commissioners' meeting, and I questioned the vouchers. This meeting and topic made front page of the local paper, the Times Tribune. It was a recorded meeting, there was a newspaper article, I do still have it. Mr. McLean stood up here, and he actually agreed with Roll Call at this meeting shortly thereafter. And again, guys, ladies, and gentlemen, I'm not speculating, God bless you, but shortly thereafter, McLean was let go from county employment, for whatever reason, I don't know, but that's all I know. February 8th of 2012, Chief Minetti responded, and he said, the choice of vendor has never been up to the sheriff's department as long as specifications are met. So the sheriff decides the specs that he wants, the commissioners say where the money will be spent. And I do have that email also. So the sheriff picks up, the sheriff picks up the equipment, the commissioners pick the vendor, all right? So now, next year, I do get an RFP, okay? The county contacts me. So they got through the whole year, and it was over $100,000 that all went and was all funneled to one place. I had nothing, I got nothing out of that. Now, again, the bid process, this money is already spent allocated money. It's not even if we bid, I'm going to be cheaper, and he's, I'm going to save the county taxpayers' money. I wish to offer the deputies more for their uniform allowance, but that's fair trade, that's where that comes in. So the RFP had all the gear and the uniforms that Roll Call did not carry due to the competitor and the area protection with certain manufacturers. So it's basically, that restaurant is allotted Pepsi, that restaurant's cola, it's the same concept. So there was all the equipment that was put in this RFP was specifically geared towards equipment that I did not have, but I did have the like items. I've been supplying with my father, my father's been supplying police agencies throughout a couple counties for almost about 10 years now, long time. So it's not like the equipment is substandard. So the new purchasing director at that time, Mr. Petnato, had Roll Call bring in the equipment that was offered, because we said, well, we can't bid this because it's all named brand, it's not specs. So they said, okay, we'll bring it all in, we'll take a look at it. As a matter of fact, I think we were here. So my father, Tom, and I, keep in mind, I'm still employed with the Scranton Police, never took any dimes or paycheck or anything from Roll Call, it's a family company. We brought cases and cases of uniforms and equipment in here. Literally, it looked like we were actually fleeing the country. I mean, you would be surprised. This is everything that we have to offer. At the meeting was a representative from Star Uniform, who currently gets all the vouchers. Sergeant Ford from the sheriff's department was here, Mr. Petnato was here, Tom and myself, Tom meaning the owner of Roll Call, sitting right there. I get, no one at the meeting, we don't want to see it, we don't want to see the equipment. Well, why was I told to bring all this equipment? Well, nah, we don't need it. It was plain and simple, they didn't want it. So the new director of purchasing said that Roll Call has to provide, after we left, he said, okay, well, here, let me figure it out, we'll, and again, I was being delayed. Keep in mind, folks, the goalpost has been moved on me so many times, I cannot keep up at this point, I'm done. The new director of purchasing said now, Roll Call has to provide county samples to see if the sheriff would approve of the other named brands. Their request would have cost Roll Call literally thousands, tens of thousands of dollars, being such a young company, wasn't ever going to happen. Tens of thousands of dollars, literally, to bring in a bunch of samples, so everybody gets to wear, and they get to decide, yeah, we like it or we don't like it. It's the same stuff. It's the same stuff, it's Coke and Pepsi. So I told Petnato, I said, Star Uniform don't need samples, why are we required now to bring in all these samples? Quote, he has home-field advantage. Roll Call placed a bid with like items anyway, obviously, we didn't give all the samples, so we placed a bid, and we did not get the bid. I don't even know what the outcome was, I don't know what the pricing was, okay? The county was able to push us out because we didn't have the samples, is basically what happened. I personally could not push it any further because it was affecting my employment with the Scranton Police Department, which resulted in a lawsuit I had to file, literally. I received a judgment, it was not a settlement. A judge said, Joe, you're right. That's a whole nother story, but it all stemmed from me attempting to get my parents' business with the county for the Lackawanna County Sheriff's Department deputies, truly. And that was in the paper. Anybody wants to learn more about that, I'm an open book, I have nothing to hide here. 2017, I retired from the Scranton Police Department. I did not go off on any kind of injury, nothing at all. I put in my papers, I retired, and that was it. I was hired full-time by my father, Tom, who's the owner, and of course, my mother. So at this point, now, I do have a timeline of 2014, 2015, but I'm, for the sake of trying to condense all this, and I really do appreciate everybody's patience, thank you, but for the purpose of trying to condense this, I'm trying to get right to 2018. Here's where you fine men and lady come in, okay? This is what I'm asking, I'm almost begging, like, I need this. This is very important to the company. So September 6th, I contacted, I emailed Commissioners O'Malley, Notorianni, and Cummings, along with Sheriff McCandrew, Chief Deputy Ty, County Controller, Mr. DeBilio. I explained a little bit about my, and you can only explain so much in an email, and I get it. So that's why I'd like to be here and actually explain, so you know the whole history of what's been going on, and how many times it's been moved on me in the past. So I explained everything, and I don't, I explained how the bid process doesn't save the county any money, it was just, it was just a smokescreen, it was funneling the money to one particular vendor every single time. We could bid all we want, but if there's $100,000 allocated, that's not saving anybody money, it's literally $100,000 that is allocated, except we moved from Luzerne County to Lackawanna County in attempts to help, in attempts to grow the business, and of course, obviously, I would expect everybody that would want to foster competition, that's what, that's what we are, that's what makes, that's what makes it great. Not only that, that's what law, antitrust laws are written about, the Clayton Act, the Sherman Act, all that stuff, it's all relevant.
Mr. Harris, can I ask you one question?
Please do.
As far as specking a particular brand, it is up to the individual deputies to decide what they want.
It's up to the sheriff.
It's up to the sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Did you talk to the sheriff?
Yes, ma'am, I did. He, I'd love to get to that point, and I totally, make it totally clear.
We have like two other meetings, and if we don't end this meeting soon, we're not going to have our salary board meeting, because our prison board meeting's at 1:00.
I'm almost done?
Okay.
Okay?
Go ahead, Joe.
So the issue of the sheriff approving the Roll Call goods at this point is resolved. November 30th, 2018, I had an in-person meeting with Sheriff McCandrew and Chief Deputy Ty in the sheriff's office. I explained the, what Roll Call's previous issues with the county and the deputy's approval for using Roll Call, a vendor for their vouchers. Sheriff McCandrew said, quote, "Joe, I embrace business competition," unquote. Sheriff McCandrew said he does not care if the deputies use their vouchers to go to Roll Call or Star Uniform. So I said, you're good with that, our equipment's good? I asked him, I says, Sheriff, is it okay if I refer to what you just said in an email to the commissioners? He said, yes, 100%. So ma'am, to answer your question, yes. But the next issue now that I'm having is that December 3rd, 2018, Mr. Fredrickson emailed me and said that due to my employment with the county, the county cannot allow Roll Call to bid. I work about 30 hours a year, maybe, I don't know, you could probably check it out, give or take, maybe 50 hours. I ride the sheriff's horses part-time in parades. I have no authority, no decision-making authority whatsoever, I actually, literally shovel, manure when I'm at the stables. I have zero decision-making authority whatsoever. I did respond back informing that my father is 100% owner of Roll Call, since then, I have not heard back. Just a few minutes ago, I was presented, I did receive the Code of Ethics via email from Mr. Fredrickson, that said that you cannot own the company and actually do business with the county. I did tell the sheriff I would resign, but then it was thrown back and said, you need one year of separation to actually do business. I said, well, Tom owns the business. Now I can't have the business because I am employed, but I am actually employed by the sheriff, who is an elected official. I'm not so sure that I'm technically employed by the county, but that's a whole nother argument. But my point I'm trying to make here is the money belongs to the deputies, which has been agreed upon in the collective bargaining agreement. This is not the county's money at that point, it's the deputy's money. I'm asking for them to have the right to spend their money where they want to. If this is put out to bid, we will not be bidding, because it was a joke in the past. I'm not saying it would be a joke now, under this administration. But in the past, it was a smokescreen, and it was a joke, and we were made fools out of. And that, I could prove every last thing that I'm saying with times and dates and emails. There is nothing, I spent, I spent 15, now 17 years now in law enforcement, I testified numerous times, I had a stellar career, I never had one demerit on my entire record. I would not sit here and lie to you, ladies and gentlemen, or anybody on this board or within the county. So what I'm asking today, if there would be a motion that you would put us on the vouchers for this upcoming season, I don't want to be, I don't want to exclude the other guy neither, he is also an approved county vendor, as am I. Let the sheriff deputies decide where they want to use their vouchers. That's all I'm asking. So I would ask if there would be a motion today to allow the deputies to use either-or, that would be up to me to earn the deputy's business. I don't want it all, I don't need it all, that's fair trade.
I'd make that motion.
Our problem is we can't make, we can't, this is something we can't make.
Yeah, there's two issues. One, under the 1620 rights of the sheriff, it's his decision, honestly, we don't have that authority to do that. Second of all, Mr. Harris is correct, our county ethics code prohibits any county employee from doing business with the county, or seek to do business with the county, but additionally, the code states that these conflicts of interest apply to the employee and his immediate family, which includes spouses, parents, children, and siblings of the employee.
Was that?
Under the county ethics code, yes, Commissioner.
Sir, the codes that I got did not state that second part. When you sent me over the county ethics code, it did not say anything about that second part where it extends to family members.
It's in the ethics code, I mean, I don't, you know, it's right there on.
I know, you sent it to me, but I did not see the second part in there at all.
Well, it's there, it's at the end of that section, so.
So here I am.
That's the situation we have, it'd be a violation of the county ethics code from the.
If I agreed to retire and resign right here, right now.
That's something you have to take up with the sheriff, again, you have to go to the sheriff for that.
Well, the sheriff does say that they, the sheriff has been told to me now and in the past that they decide where they do that.
Joe, we couldn't vote that right now, it just wouldn't happen.
It's not the case, it's not the case. Sheriff under a 1620 rights has the right to specify the uniforms and the.
He does, and he was okay with that, yes, sir. But the county officials decide where they would use their vouchers at.
That's not correct.
Well, now, since they can buy where they like to, as long as it's approved by the sheriff.
If it's approved by the sheriff, correct, yes.
They can buy anywhere they want.
That's correct.
Okay.
So this just has, this goes back to the, correct me if I'm wrong, and again, thank you for your time, but, so this would go back to the sheriff, the sheriff could say the deputies could use their uniform allowance at either place or where they want to, that's up to the sheriff, is that understood?
See, we could have, we could have had this conversation in a work session, this whole, very thing.
I brought that to Joe's.
I emailed you four months.
I emailed you four months ago.
It's up, it's up, it's up to the sheriff, but again, you still have the ethics issue, so I think the sheriff is working with that.
Did I get an email on this thing? Because I don't.
You've been CC'd on everyone.
What's that? Well, my, did I get an email?
Well, I'll look back at emails, but I know a lot of them were forwarded to Donnie to handle.
Okay, oh, okay, so there was a legal question, okay.
Correct.
Okay. So this would be the sheriff's decision at this point?
Yeah, you have to deal with the sheriff on this, yeah.
Okay, and as far as the code of ethics?
That's, he'll have to work through that.
With the sheriff?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and if the sheriff is okay with it, we're, that's the legal advice, if the sheriff is okay with it, we will be added to the vouchers for 2019.
You have to deal with the sheriff on that, I can't answer for him, I don't know.
No, no, I mean legally, that's his responsibility, is that what you're saying?
Correct, that is correct, yes.
Great, okay, thank you.
And I didn't get a phone call, I mean, if it was four months ago, you should call, I don't, anybody in the public, I really don't, my email goes to my receptionist and, you know, because of all the questions with emails, I tend to not even work with email, I just, so you want to talk to me, I'm here, call me, and, you know, I'd be happy to talk to you.
That's how a lot of us work, Joe.
Yeah, the email thing is really scary for.
I received calls back from Mr. Notorianni, Mr. O'Malley, Mr. Wexler, so some people were getting their emails.
No, no, I'm sure that my receptionist got it, and I'm sure that she handed it over to our attorneys, but, fact of the matter is, is if it was four months ago, really, you should have called us, I mean, I take phone calls all the time, I go visit people all the time in the public, I would have called you back, but emails, I tend not to work with. Because of all the questions about emails, that's why.
Does anybody else have any questions for me as far as, or anything else?
I'll talk to you off-site, though, I will call you.
Commissioner, okay, we need a side, we need a side.
Well, I know, we have three meetings we're going to have to cancel, so I don't know what to do.
No, it's up to the sheriff now, the sheriff could actually allow this to happen.
Is that what he said? Yep.
Probably, but the sheriff has the final decision where they go for their uniforms and what's approved.
That's their understanding?
That was.
Is that, you know, another smokescreen going to show up later on?
Yes, of course.
I wanted to, like, if you can get them on record.
Well, they are on record, that's what I asked, if that, if it's solely up to the sheriff on where they spend their uniform allowance and what equipment they could use.
Are they all on record, each one? I don't think each one had, I don't think each one of them admitted to it.
Oh, well, he was the legal counsel.
Yeah, but he sort of gave himself an out, you know, it'd be up to the sheriff, you know.
And we'll proceed at that point or something, you know, kind of give a little slip there.
Yeah, they're going to just stand there until I leave.
Yeah, okay.